Right, good morning, good morning Chairman, we are now live.
Thank you very much, can I welcome everybody to the virtual meeting of the Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire? Just to explain that the normal Chairman Carl Marshall is unable to come today due to family reasons. So I will be, he'll have the misfortune of having me chairing your meeting today, I'm afraid. And I think I'd like to welcome everybody very much to it, we've got a fairly meaty agenda. And if we can get moving, can we go on and over to you, I think Katrina, for any apologies or replacement members?
Right firstly Chairman, we just need to confirm attendance of those present, so if I could just read everybody's names out please and if you could just confirm your attendance. And councillor Bill Bilton.
Yeah, in attendance.
Councillor Chris Bruce.
Present.
Councillor Matthew Fido.
Present, present.
Councillor, Mrs Sandra Harrison.
Present.
Councillor Rob Kendrick.
Present.
Councillor Colin Matthews. You might have to turn your mute button off, Councillor Matthews.
Present, thank you Katrina.
Thank you, Councillor Robin Venshaw.
Present.
Councillor Angela White.
Present.
Councillor Mark Whittington.
Present.
Councillor Stephen Woodley.
Present.
So Linda Wotton.
Present.
Thank you, Councillor Ray Wotton.
Present.
And Dr Wookiee.
Present.
Thank you. It's over to you Chairman for your introductions.
Yeah, my introductions really are, I did speak yesterday and Carl Maysey's not here today. We will today, I shall need plenty of help obviously from Katrina and Simon. I have no means of knowing who is able to speak, so if you will in your normal way indicate electronically you wish to speak under the items, then I shall rely on Katrina and Simon to keep me updated on that. Despite what you were told, the votes for today will be by roll call and we'll consider reintroducing the new system in, at the meeting, the next meeting. I think I'll immediately then if I can move on to ask Katrina how many apologies we have and any replacement members?
Thank you Chairman, before I say that, can I just also confirm we've got councillor Mike Thompson, present, executive support councillor at NHS liaison and community page.
Yeah, I did see him, yeah.
Yeah, present.
Thank you, and I think we've got Catholic Choudry, public health consultant, present as well. Thank you very much, is there, is there anybody that hasn't had their name called out that's present? Okay, so we'll move on to item one which is apologies for absence. We, we received apologies from the councillor com, the chairman councillor Carl Maysey, councillors Susanna Barker Milan, councillor Rosemary Kayby Brown and councillor Gwynnys Galaisie. We have today also councillor, this is Linda Wotton in place of councillor Rosemary Kayby Brown. An apology is all, an apology has also been received from councillor Sue Woolley, executive councillor of NHS liaison and community engagement. We're on to item two now Chairman, declarations of members' interests.
Declaration, if anyone does have a declaration which they can of course declare when we come to an item, but if you have got any that aren't on your, already on your members' list of declarations, has anybody got any to declare at this stage? Take the long silence of the fact that there are none in that case. Can we move on to the minutes of the meeting which was held on the 22nd of July? And I think you've all had them circulated to you. And I'm going to assume that they've been read, has anybody got any comments or queries on accuracy that they wish to raise? If you could do, if you have, could you raise them now please?
Also received Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, can I, can I, would somebody be prepared to move them as a correct, as a correct record please?
Chairman, I'm happy to move those as the correct record of the meeting.
Thank you Ray, have I got a second please?
I'm happy to second those for each councillor Colin Matthews.
Thank you very much Colin, do we have to have a roll call for that Katrina?
Yes, we do, and I will just.
We will now, they have been moved and seconded, so Katrina will now hold a roll call, you will say whether you are for, against or abstain, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you Chairman, councillor Chris Bruce.
I'm for.
Councillor Bill Bilton.
For.
Councillor Matthew Fido. Councillor Fido. You'll need to take your microphone off. No, I'll come back to him. Councillor Rob Kendrick. Councillor Colin Matthews.
I'm for.
Councillor Robin Venshaw.
For.
Councillor Angela White. Councillor Mark Whittington. Councillor Stephen Woodley.
For.
Councillor Linda Wotton.
For.
Thank you, Councillor Ray Wotton.
For.
Is councillor Fido there, would you like to respond as you for or against, abstain? No, okay, so from the voting so far, from those answered, that's unanimous Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Katrina, unfortunately you've missed myself.
Oh sorry councillor Sandra Harrison, sorry.
For.
Thank you very much, yeah, so that's unanimous.
Lovely, thank you very much, right, if we can then we will move on to agenda item four. The various Chair, Chairmans announcements including this morning have been circulated to and I think I'll hand over if I may briefly to Simon to update you on any of them. And I think I'm grateful, grateful to Simon and Carl for keeping us up to date by circulating us with those, but over to you Simon.
Yes, thank you Chairman, so in addition to the supplementary announcements which were emailed to members of the committee yesterday, there has been a further letter from Edward Argar MP, the Minister of State for Health, which was received by the Chairman yesterday evening, which has been circulated to members of the committee on email this morning, this relates to correspondence in relation to Grantham Hospital. Could I also add that in the supplementary announcements, there is a reference to the proposed closure of the Woolsthorpe surgery. And it has now been confirmed that the Woolsthorpe surgery affects 1,650 patients in Lincolnshire. And they've all been asked to, they've all been, they've all received a letter on the proposals. The total number of patients registered at the Stackyard surgery is 3,800 and so that includes the Woolsthorpe number, so it's 3,800 at Stackyard, but 1,650 of those are registered at the Woolsthorpe surgery. The outcome of the consultation on, on the proposed closure will be presented at some, to a future meeting of the Clinical Commissioning Group's primary committee. Chairman, I have also logged councillor Ray Wotton and councillor Rob Kendrick have also requested that they speak on, on this item. Thank you Chairman.
Well I think, I mean, I think those of us who have read this letter, it doesn't take us a great deal further forward, does it? But I'll immediately go over to Ray if I may first and then Rob.
Thank you Chairman, I also read the minister's reply and it didn't really fill me with any hope at all for the future of Grantham Hospital, in fact, less so really, because despite resolutions being passed by this council and a district council and an extraordinary meeting of the district council in July, we're still no far forward than we were three years ago when the overnight closure came into effect.
Exactly.
I hope that we will press the CGD, I know I will because I'll be attending the, the virtual AGM on the 24th and also the UNHT AGM on the 25th and I will, if get, give the opportunity, I will put questions to both organisations on, on the future of our hospital, thank you.
Thank you very much, Rob Kendrick, over to you Rob.
Sorry Chairman, it's another item I wanted to speak on, sorry.
Oh was it, okay, that's all right then, okay, I think we've all of us would share what Ray said and I think the response virtually saying, well, it's down to you locally to decide what you want to do. And we all know that one of the problems is the number of consultants and medical personnel and that's a national matter, so I must admit I was somewhat disappointed by the letter in effect brushing it off and saying it's not down to me. Whether we should respond back saying, or how we should respond, I'm not quite sure, I don't know what your view is on that Simon.
Chairman, just to say that there are two further speakers have come forward, councillor Mark, Mark Whittington and councillor Stephen Woodley have indicated that they wish to speak on this item.
Okay lovely, over to you Mark first, okay?
Thank you very much Mr Chairman, I actually wanted to speak on two items, the first item which I shall deal with is the Woolsthorpe surgery. The, the Woolsthorpe surgery is in my division.
Can, can, can we, can, could I, could we deal with the, the letter from Mr Agar first and then we'll deal with Woolsthorpe if we want to do that? If we can deal with them separately please.
Okay, thanks, okay Chris, yeah, I mean I have to say I, I agree with both your comments Mr Chairman and also the comments of councillor Ray Wotton as well. I'm distinctly underwhelmed by the response and it does seem that it is, it, it, it is, it is just, just passing it back locally. But this is a slight nonsense actually, because we all know that the decisions on this are taken on a more national level by NHS England anyway. And they direct to a large extent both the CCG and the Trust into how they're going to do things. So, so, so I would certainly be supportive if we, if we decide to send a response back to the Minister and the Secretary of State sort of reemphasising our concerns and actually stating that, you know, this is, this decision, yes, it may be being taken locally but it's under national guidance, thank you Mr Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, and Stephen Woodley, over to you.
Thank you Chairman, yes I fully support the, the views of councillor Ray Wotton and councillor Whittington. I find it quite amazing that the Minister can write back and say, well yes I know it's been going on for three years, but don't worry, it can carry on for another three years. I mean it's just not good enough. And as councillor Whittington pointed out, this is a government matter, government can support this out. You know, just to dish it back to the local people and say, well you know, sort it out yourselves chums, I'm sorry, that's not good enough. So I need to, need to write back to the person, Edward Agar and tell him to do his job properly, which is basically support us. This is a Conservative account, this is a Conservative-run county asking a Conservative government to do something. It's about time they recognise that fact, isn't it? I'm not a Conservative but I'm currently an independent, but this is, you know, this county is, has always been a strong supporter of the Conservative Party. It's about time this Conservative government took a bit more notice of its Conservative supporters, isn't it? So I'll leave it at that, my full support for Ray Wotton and councillor Whittington, let's cut on.
Chairman, I've also got two other, I think we've also got councillor Whittington who, who wanted to come back on the Woolsthorpe element of the Chairmans announcements. Councillor Rob Kendrick has indicated he would like to speak on the Ash Villa element of the Chairmans announcements. And councillor Mike Thompson has also indicated he wishes to speak. I just wondered, given that we're now at quarter past ten, whether you would like to continue this or whether you'd like to come back to the Chairmans announcements as part of the work programme later this morning, just so that we don't delay the opening item.
I think everyone might well support that, that we, we won't lose sight of that, we will respond and we'll, we'll deal with that while we've had our presentation this morning. Yes, I think that's much the best way of doing it, thank you very much. So if everyone agrees, we will do that, okay? And but we will, but we shan't lose sight of it and we will come back and address that later, what our response will be. Right, if we can then, may we move on to item five, which is.
Excuse me Chairman, can you just make, can we propose that they note the Chairmans announcements in the supplementary proposal in a second please?
All right, yeah, and the, and the actual response will deal with that at the end then, yeah, can you, are you happy that we note, can I take, you are happy that we note and thank the Chairman for his announcements? And that if there's nobody who indicates they're against, I would assume that's unanimous, I'll give you five seconds if anyone wishes to object to that. I think we can take it, yes, thank you very much then in that case, okay?
No objections Chairman.
Lovely, thank you very much, so we accept the Chairmans announcement, we'll deal with those three matters at the end. We'll move on to item five if we may then, which is United Lincoln Hospitals NHS Trust Covid-19 update. And we, clearly you've had the presentation and I think presenting this today, I believe we have, is it Mark Brassington going to do it for us?
That's correct.
Mark, and I believe the other Simon Evans is with you, is that right?
That is correct, yes, we are a double act.
Good morning.
Well, the double act, if I may, can I hand over to the double act then, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for, for the opportunity to update you on our actions through, through Covid. We were last updating you in June and as you know, many things have happened in the organisation, so there's quite a lot that we just want to, just to point to. And, but if, if you feel that you wish to curtail them, please do just, just stop us and we can move straight to questions. I'll provide a brief overview and then Simon will provide a bit more of the detail of what's happening in the, in the recovery phase as things stand. So I'm Mark Brassington, I'm the Director of Improvement and Integration, the Deputy Chief Exec and Andrew Morgan sent us apologies this morning. He's had some well-earned rest this week on, on leave. So you've received two reports that our Trust Board have considered, one from the 7th of July and one from the 1st of September. And in that it does set out comprehensively the actions that we've been taking as an organisation. And just to remind people of the timeline, that nationally we went to a national, a level four national incident on the 30th of January, that we entered what was called the managed phase, so this is the initial phase of response to Covid on the, on the 3rd of March. When we last spoke to you in June, we were in the restore phase that started on the 11th of May. And then when we moved into the recovery phase on the 31st of July. And in the papers it does outline the aims of, of each of those, of those phases, so as I talked to you today, we're in the recovery phase. The other thing is just to point out is that on the 1st of August, the national emergency level was lowered from a level four to a level three. And that means it moved from a national response, a nationally coordinated response to a regional response. And I think it's really important for, for me to state that although this has been level, lowered from a level four, from a national response to a regional response as a level three, we do remain in a state of managing an incident. And we are expected to be in a state of preparedness to be able to step back up to a level four as and when required. As, as colleagues will have read through the, through the papers that we've shared, we have had to bring in a huge number of changes to the way that we have delivered services. And many of those have been under the guise of the level four national incident where we were instructed to close down a number of our services in the, in the managed phase and then start to reopen those services as we went into restore and recovery. And it's important to say that this has affected all of our hospital sites and all of our peripheral sites where we deliver our services from. This hasn't just been a particular part of our county that this has affected, it has been widespread effect. And we acknowledge that and appreciate the impact that, that has had on the public, on patients, but also on our, on our staff members who are providing services as well, it's been not only an anxious time with dealing with a virus to a level that we've never seen before, but also the impact it's had on their personal ways of working and the way that they've delivered their services. We have put in place something called a green site, which is delivered from the Grantham Hospital site and that came into effect from the 1st of July. And there has obviously been a significant number of discussions that have happened with regards to the changes that have happened on, on the Grantham site, but I will refer people back to, there has also been changes across our other sites also. But it's really important to note, because people say, and was, you know, was it all really necessary and was it required? And we had a significant backlog of patients, as we came out the initial surge of, of dealing with Covid patients, and we had a significant backlog of patients and we continue to have a backlog of patients waiting for diagnostics, for screening services, for their operations, for outpatient. And we're talking thousands of patients. And if we hadn't have undertaken the changes that we put in place as we came into the, into the recovery phase, we wouldn't have operated on the six, over 680 patients that we've operated on to date and these are cancer patients and clinically urgent patients. So I really do understand the, the upheaval that it's caused and the anxiety that it's caused. But it has enabled us to operate on nearly 700 patients that we wouldn't have operated on if we hadn't brought about this change, because these are the most vulnerable patients and the patients that we need to ensure that we protect from any additional risk of Covid. It's also probably important to point out that the Trust Board received a specific paper with regards to these changes and we believed that these were the right things to do for the whole of the population of Lincolnshire. Because as I said, the backlog and the demands that were, that were building up for, for accessing services. Now I'm pleased to say that we are starting to see confidence returning from within the public to access the services, but there, there are a, a large number of people still unwilling and unhappy to, to access hospital services in the way that they did do before. So we are providing alternative services and ways of accessing, but there are still a large number of people still waiting to access our services and and they're not able to do so because of them not being confident about their personal safety. So obviously there's a lot of work that we're doing to reassure people of the measures that we have in place to keep people safe and that includes our, our green site approach. And as of today, as I talk to you, and we have two patients confirmed with Covid in our organisation. However, it's really important to point out that as the national picture is, is showing an increase in a background of Covid cases, we're also seeing a rise of people coming into hospital with query Covid symptoms. So whilst we remain on a low number, it is quite a precarious situation, we do expect that number to rise over the coming days and weeks in line with, with the national position. And again, I think it's really important to point out to people that throughout this phase of Covid, we've actually only had 14 days, so this is since the start of Covid, we've only had 14 days where we've had zero Covid patients in our hospitals. So whilst the numbers might be on the lower side, we have, as a county which is really positive and as a hospital which is really positive, we have still had to have things in place to enable us to deal with, with Covid patients. Because even if it's one, there's, there's obviously a risk there to, to colleagues and to patients that we have to ensure that we have enhanced things in place. And, and those things are the, the social distancing, the additional hygiene measures that we have to have in place and obviously the, the wearing of personal protective equipment. And these are quite disruptive to, to the way that we would normally deliver services, so we are not operating at a hundred percent or anywhere near a normal level of service than where we were before Covid, Covid came. So they're probably my first introductory remarks and provide that broad overview and if, if you're happy Chairman to, for me to hand over to Simon to give a little bit more detail of where we are with regards to our recovery phase, so Simon over to yourself.
Thank you very much, very much.
Thanks Mark.
Quite a bit of feedback there, okay, so thanks very much for that. In terms of some of the detail, what I was going to articulate is some of the progress that we've made in the recovery phase. As, as Mark stated, the recovery phase started essentially from the 1st of August. And at that part, that point we were asked by NHS England and Improvement to compile a robust plan and put in place measures to, to restore all of our services to very high levels and in most cases back to levels that were pre-Covid, so in terms of the number of patients we were able to treat, to essentially get back to where we were before Covid began. In the report, it describes some of the progress, but I can give you a little bit more of an update on top of the board reports that you've seen. In terms of our urgent care provision, so urgent and emergency care, in August we saw actually nine percent more patients accessing our urgent care services than previous years. So that is an encouraging sign that, that the, the population of, of Lincolnshire are accessing urgent care when they need it. And as the report describes, that in the first phase of Covid-19, that activity dropped to nearly sixty percent lower than previous years, so we knew that there was a confidence issue with urgent care, but it's pleasing to see that that's now been restored and we're now starting to see more than pre-Covid levels. Despite that, we are actually offering waiting times that are better than last year, although we acknowledge that these waiting times are still not at the level that we would want, against particularly things like the four hour standard in our A and E's. But we have seen a six percent improvement from this, at this point last year, despite seeing nine percent more patients coming through our urgent care system. In addition to that, you may have heard that we've also been successful in securing additional capital to expand our emergency department at Pilgrim and we're working on plans for doing the same at Lincoln. And that's recognising that in order to deliver safe services and urgent care, to build facilities that can cope with social distancing, we've had to expand our physical premises and that work's begun already at Pilgrim in terms of our planning and we're expecting to have improvements on, on both those sites over the course of the, the remainder of this financial year. In regards to planned care, as Mark said, we have already made significant progress and if I speak about cancer first, we have now seen a forty percent reduction in the number of patients who have been waiting more than 62 days for their cancer treatment, that's a standard that we set. It's important as we know that that starts to have an impact on patient outcomes. And from the more than 400 patients that have been waiting longer than 62 days, we're now down to less than 300 approximately. And for those patients that have been waiting the very longest, so more than a hundred days for treatment, we've managed to reduce that by sixty percent. Down from nearly 159 patients down to 68, showing sort of some significant progress in reducing waiting times for those patients. As Mark said, we still have issues with cancer and our elective services of patients choosing not to come in for treatment. But we hope that as confidence builds in our services, that patients will make that right choice to come in and have their treatments in our hospitals. Mark touched on the number of days without a, a patient in our wards. Sort of that had, so the number of days where we didn't have Covid positive patients in our hospitals. But I'm pleased to say since the beginning of the Grantham green site model, we have had no patients on sides Covid positive. So our green site has remained protected from Covid transmission and we've had no patient to patient or staff to patient transmission in, in that side, that protects.
in in that side. That protects our most vulnerable patients and has helped us uh keep those that nearly seven hundred patients uh who are having surgery safe. But also a huge number of chemotherapy and other treatments that we've been able to offer during that time. From a diagnostics perspective, uh there were major concerns nationally about the the restoration of uh uh cancer diagnostic services and we we uh took that very seriously at ULHT and uh put in place a number of schemes to very significantly increase the number of diagnostic procedures that could be carried out in a very short period of time. I'm pleased to say uh that we have exceeded the the request of putting in place uh pre-Covid levels of diagnostic services. And it actually on a number of areas, we've now greatly exceeded that. The most notable one being endoscopy services. Where a large proportion of patients who have suspect cancer require an important endo- endoscopic procedure. Uh and in recent weeks, we've exceeded more than two hundred percent of pre-Covid capacity. Um offering that service across uh multiple sites uh in order to uh to ensure our patients get timely diagnostic and um a cancer treatment. And then finally, if I just touch on uh our overall planned care, this is the possibly one of the most difficult parts of our planning. Uh because of the number of patients and the number of uh outpatient um consultations, treatments that are required to be put back in place while still maintaining extremely high levels of infection prevention and control. Uh and I'm pleased to say that we have now uh restored, only switched on all of our services. Although we haven't yet put on the volume of services that we've uh that we're required to and that we have an ambition. At the moment, uh uh the the last reported figure was indicating that we were only up to between seventy and eighty percent of our overall outpatient uh capacity required. And so clearly, there's more work for us to do. Uh and increasing the um physical capacity and therefore uh the number of um appointments that we can offer for our patients. That said, we we haven't seen the demand in uh services for a number of months now and we know that our referrals have been uh greatly reduced. And so therefore, we have managed to reduce our waiting lists over this period despite not having uh necessarily the full volume of uh appointments available. So we we expect as we increase our uh capacity, we will also see an increase in demand from our primary care colleagues. And indeed, the reassuring thing uh so far is that for our most urgent referrals, our two-week waits, our suspected cancer referrals, they're now in excess of ninety percent of the referral rate that we saw pre-Covid. Indicating that certainly patients who suspect they may have cancer are accessing primary care and that they in turn are being referred into our services successfully. And so hopefully, that's that's a useful update in terms of some of the detail about aspects of our services that have restored and recovered. Clearly, a lot more in the in the board report and I'm happy to take uh questions from uh colleagues.
Um thank you both very much indeed for always a comprehensive report. Um uh who have we any wish- one wishing to speak, Simon?
Yes, yes, Chairman. I've got three uh speakers, councillor Ray Woodson, councillor Mark Whittington. Yeah. And councillor Angela White and also just uh councillor Rob Kendrick has also uh indicated he wishes to speak. So we've got four speakers listed, Chairman, so far. Thank you.
So over to you first, Ray, if we may.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Chairman. Um Mark and Simon. Some you've need to say so, but congratulations to you and your team and the staff at ULHT for getting the cancer list down because I think that's really important. I know how emotional somebody that been diagnosed with cancer feels and wants that treatment soon and quick. Um do you do you believe that you'll get that list down to where it should be soon? And also, you know, I'm uh critical of the 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 plan, well, the green site in Grantham. Do you believe that you will return the uh UTC to back to its A and E status sooner rather than later?
Thank you.
Shall I start with um, shall I start with the second question and hand over to Simon with regards to um cancer? Um so our intent, our intent is very clear, um that this is for a time limited period, um the the green site with some very clear um um aspirations of putting this in place. Um in our board meeting uh in October, we will be sharing the review of the impact of the green site. And we'll also be sharing um what um what the um um the the factors would be to reverse the decision earlier than our original um um statement of the thirty-first of March. So um that and I know um councillor Woodson, you um you regularly attend our our virtual board meetings and in those papers, it will it will set out what would what we would um use as factors to reverse the decision and and bring it to to an end sooner. Um and whether that be because we've achieved our aims and ambitions and from the green site, or whether it be because of a deteriorating picture with Covid and the requirement for us to um operate our bed base differently um across all of our sites. So so as I said, um yes, there is that commitment. It's a time limited period. Um and there'll be further information in the quarterly review of the green site approach and our board meeting in October.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, in terms of your first question, uh councillor Woodson, and um our ambition is to return our cancer waiting uh time levels uh down to pre-Covid levels uh by the end of October and November of this year. That is our ambition. Um one of the factors that uh we we're needing to play into that is patients who are clinically urgent but not cancer. Uh and and this is a a difficult one to plan for as 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 a health service, I don't think we've ever been in this position where we've had so many patients that have been waiting for so long. Uh and obviously, as patients do sadly, in some cases deteriorate um over time and they become more clinically urgent. So over time, we have uh increased the number of clinically urgent cases that we're operating on, particularly at Grantham as those patients are are very vulnerable. Uh and that's one of those factors that we're playing in. But our ambition still is for a cancer-only perspective to get them to pre-Covid levels uh by November.
Thanks. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Uh Mark, I think you were next.
Uh yes, thank you very much indeed, Mr. Chairman. And 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 Mark and Simon, I again, you you know, I'm I'm often quite critical of of the trust, but I actually want to reiterate the 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 comments of councillor Woodson and 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 thank you and all the staff who've um you know, is around the cancer, because I did have the cancer waiting lists as one of my items, but I think it's been been addressed. I know it's been a subject that's been debated in the newspapers and this concern that, you know, during Covid. Unfortunately, we have lost a lot of people in the country to Covid, but there's potentially been what has been referred to as the the hidden deaths that yeah, potentially that the people may have needed certain types of interventions haven't haven't had them. So so I'm really pleased that that the the progress you're making on the waiting list. And it'd be great if you could update that progress at some future meeting, just to give us the reassurance. Um a- and again, um around the um I I think you've answered a a lot of my second question, which which was around the green side of Grantham. But as part of that review, are the medical beds or the re- restoration of the medical beds of Grantham part of that review process is my first question. Um the the second one, a- and again, this is something I've picked up again in the newspapers um the last week or so, but a- and it's obviously an issue at the moment with people waiting long periods of time to get their Covid test back. And I believe it's reported in the Telegraph at the start of the week that a lot of NHS trusts uh were reporting that they had a lot of staff potentially off who've either may have Covid themselves or may have a family member who's who's got Covid. And it's having a big impact upon staffing ratios and stuff like that. So I'm just wondering if that's affecting you. Um and then also what potentially what we as the health scrutiny could do to support you, perhaps if, you know, contacting the powers that be to say, look, you know, this is this is affecting our local health service in Lincolnshire and and can you try and, you know, improve the uh the time it takes to get these these results back. And the final uh thing is, obviously, you know, from level four to level three. Uh and I know it looks like at the moment, we're kind of hovering there. We potentially could go back up to level four uh s- fairly soon. Just uh just some reassurance about how long or how easy to think the process would be for you to ramp back up from 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 your level three stuff to your level four provision. Um but apart from that, thank you very much indeed. And and again, please thank all the staff at this difficult time for all the the hard work they're doing on behalf of the residents of Lincolnshire. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um thank you very much for the recognition and councillor Woodson. Um and you know, I'd echo that. Under very difficult circumstances, the staff have been absolutely phenomenal in the way that they've been flexible and the way that they have um taken on all the challenges that that they faced. Um so it's it's great for for that recognition. Um so if I pick up the swabbing, um because obviously that's a that's a quite a high profile thing at the minute where we have um interest. Um the the I'm I'm unsure how much people are are aware of the swabbing. There's things pillar one and pillar two. So pillar one testing is um through the NHS um labs. Um and we don't have um a pathology lab um a- as part of our organisation. We work very closely with North and Lincoln Dringall. Who provides our pillar one testing. And pillar one testing typically is for um the patients who require a Covid test and result. And they obviously have a whole range of other things that they're also doing as part of their normal work. So this is on top of all the cancer uh tests, et cetera, and blood tests that they do um for us. Um so we, um at this moment in time, we are having um all the tests that we need for our patients and we're able to access a access, access that for our staff. Um and we are turning things around um within a day, which is um what we've what we've been trying to achieve and and aiming for, which is which is good. So at this moment in time, we're not seeing huge um delays. Um there are times if a machine, et cetera, goes down, it's something about resilience of the service um at times um can be a struggle. But I'm really pleased to say that we are supported well by our colleagues from North and Lincoln Dringall. It would be fair to say that um a number of our staff do access pillar two testing, which is the more um nationally um controlled um testing, which is your drive-through, uh drive-through testing, home kits, et cetera. And we are seeing, um as in other areas of the country, um challenges with accessing pillar two testing appointments. Um and that at this moment in time, um isn't having an impact on on ULHT staff, but I understand that colleagues um from um other um healthcare providers in Lincolnshire are struggling to access some of those those pillar two tests. So we are working very closely to ensure that we can support each other as you would expect us to. And the concern is that if things deteriorate and there's additional demand through schools or through um Covid tests from from the general population, that it would put pillar one testing um under a significant strain and pressure and when cause further delays. So I know that there's a lot of work underway uh to improve pillar two testing and and capacity in pillar two testing as demand rises. Um and we're working very closely with our colleagues in Public Health England. So Simon, if there's anything else you wish to add on the swabbing bit um and then hand over to you to talk about the Grantham um review?
Thanks, Mark. No, nothing nothing more to add on swabbing. Um in in terms of the uh Grantham site review, uh it will cover all facets of the changes that we've made. So it 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 will consider the the entirety of the solution that we've put in place. Um picking up on one particular aspect such as the medical beds um is is uh is a difficult thing to isolate. Um so as I've mentioned, uh we've managed to keep uh green uh site status, i.e. no positive Covid patients on Grantham since it it began. A- and that is the main reason for a a lot of services not being uh run historically in in an unplanned way. So the unplanned c- care elements of Grantham. Uh medical beds is a key one. Uh and uh even since Mark um g- gave the update this morning, we've had another positive case just whilst we've been on this call uh at Lincoln Hospital. And and so uh making sure that we absolutely reduce the chance of uh anyone contracting Covid uh at Grantham is a key part of that model. But yes, it will be reviewed uh and we're hoping to have a very thorough review as part of that uh in October. And we remain committed to continuously reviewing that. If we decide that this is something that we will continue beyond uh the October window. So uh very much. I i- in terms of your uh your next question around uh the the level four and the essentially preparing for the worst, uh we've already started. Um we have a a really good i- intelligence system. We also work with the military liaison officer uh in Lincolnshire who uh helps us uh uh gather and disseminate uh key bits of intelligence. Uh that give us some early warnings about what might be happening. A- and of course, um you will have seen uh some of those uh early warning signs in terms of the increased numbers of uh Covid in in the community, but also in the West Midlands, which is where we certainly started to see it in wave one. Um so therefore, we've already put in a number of um stepped up management arrangements, monitoring. We've also started to prepare plans for transfer and conversion of different bits of our hospitals to prepare for surge capacity. And we have a a well-tried and tested surge model uh which we used in wave one. Uh which is still available to us, uh a- and obviously is now um a bit mature, a bit more mature than it was because it was tested uh previously in wave one. So all of those things are starting and we continue to step up as as and required to respond to the needs of patients. And I think perhaps one of the things that we forgot to say when we talked uh about the high level plan is that um uh as far as Covid uh uh was concerned, uh all of our patients that had uh a need for services during the first wave managed to get those services. And and we weren't in a position unfortunately where some other trusts and other regions in the country where local patients had to be transferred out of region because those services weren't available here. Uh and that's something we're quite proud of. Uh a- and we fully anticipate putting in place again, should we see a wave two.
I think it's
Thank you.
Yeah.
Firstly, thank you.
Over to Andrew Andrew White, is it, please?
Okay, I'd just like to say that um we all know that many people have died for non-Covid reasons during this period of time. And I think that's especially true for some cancer patients who are in the last stages of their illness. For example, if they are on research trials, for example, at the Royal Marsden, those research trials were cut tails. I'd just like to ask, are these research trials being taken up again? Are people able to access them again? But before I finish, I'd like to say on the plus side, I do know there have been very successful consultations with consultants at the hospital for which I thank you.
Which has taken that one?
So I I could talk about the 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 research trials. So thank you. It's a really, really good point, uh councillor White. Thank you. Um unfortunately, we did have to stop some trials, um uh uh like many trusts in terms of having to use um the people that are involved in those trials to make sure we were shoring up our urgent and critical care services. But I'm pleased to say we have put a number of trials back in place. And actually, a- as it stands, I believe we have more research trials running in the trust than we had pre-Covid. Because we took the opportunity, particularly around wer- working with uh bigger uh teaching and academic institutions to to use Covid uh to to put in place more research. So but we've got uh two very large scale search projects running that are Covid related and will continue to do that for some time. Uh and we've now, uh because of that, we've got a bigger suite th- than pre-Covid.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's very encouraging.
Yeah, I thought so too. Uh Rob, Rob, Rob Kendrick, I think you wanted to come in.
Thank you, Chairman. Um yeah, I mean, I'd join my colleagues in saying it must be, and I know it's an overworked term and unprecedented situation for uh staff uh and management in our local NHS and clearly people have risen to the challenge and I think that's fantastic. And and some of the information we've had this morning, particularly on waiting lists, has been very, very encouraging. Because you hear so many negative reports in the media. As always, they like to pick up on the negatives rather than the positives.
Um if I if I just come to a a couple of points, um on appendix A eight fifty twenty-nine. um there's a sort of list of various ambitions, I suppose, I might call them. And one of the two things, one, I wasn't sure on what it was meant by a modern and progressive workforce, because obviously the opposite of that would be um uh an an old and regressive workforce. So I'm not sure whether that's just a little bit of NHS management speak, having written some of that stuff myself in the past, I can probably sense that. Uh but one more serious point, um on enhanced data and digital um stuff, um would that include things such as medical records? Because I'm aware, for example, if you go to Adam Brooks Hospital and you see a um a consultant there, they get all your data up on a screen. Whereas if you go in ULH, as I've accompanied people in both cases, uh they're wheeling a trolley around, as they did many thirty years ago when I started in the NHS, a trolley around with loads of paper records. I I do hope that this will mean we'll have a a similar system in ULH. And finally, just a a comment on the COVID testing. I've picked up some anecdotal stuff that um people, there has been some improper requesting of uh I've heard people just have had a cold and think, oh, I've got COVID and then demanded a test. And I think that might be clogging up the system a bit. Um I do I do hope people are made aware of the criteria that's necessary to to actually seek a test uh rather than if you have a slight cold or something, oh, I've got COVID, I'll go and get tested. There seems to be some lack of awareness amongst some people about the sort of necessary symptoms that cause you to have a test. Anyway, thank you very much, Chairman.
Okay.
So so if I start, uh just on that last point, um we we, you know, we worked very hard across all of the um um bodies in Lincolnshire to reinforce the the symptoms of of COVID and the requirements for a test. And the Health Secretary himself um repeated um the call for for people only accessing a test if they have one of those symptoms. So um there's much more we can do, uh and we do rely on on um our our population and our, you know, our 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 public to to act responsibly in in accessing tests. Um personally, I'm not aware of 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 those specific things, um but on the general point, um as always, we rely on on this collective effort to make sure that we can use resources the best that we the best that we can. And just on the point around the workforce, I'll pick that one up and hand over to Simon about digital. Um the workforce, the mo- modern progressive workforce really isn't necessarily about the person, it's about the roles. Um and we've had quite a traditional approach to providing healthcare in terms of the types of roles. Uh we know that um certain, so nursing, physiotherapy, allied health professional roles have have got a larger scope of being able to provide services and called, you know, towards the top of their licence is is the phrase that's typically used. And we don't really exploit that to the best um of 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 um our ability, really. So the modern progressive workforce is about really expanding um the roles that our staff can can undertake, making sure that we have more modern roles that are more flexible, uh more far-reaching, provides people the opportunity to operate at the top of their licence rather than a traditional model that you might just talk, uh I don't mean in a drug-free way, about medical staff and nursing staff providing a service. You know, there are a lot more people that can provide healthcare services.
That that's very useful and very, yeah, very good. Uh I can I can appreciate that. Thank you.
And Simon for digital?
Uh so in terms of digital, um it it won't be a surprise, I'm sure you've heard this uh before, that um a- as a trust, we have struggled at times financially. Um a- and uh an electronic patient record akin to Adam Brooks. And I I worked down in Cambridge here and and Peterborough for some time uh and and looked over the wall with envy at the 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 superb systems that they have. Um but they do take very significant investment. And I'm I'm pleased to say that we have got aligned uh some of the first stages of funding for moving on to a a completely digital record. And uh we're hoping to take that to the next level uh next level and create something akin to Adam Brooks uh quite soon. Um that said, uh COVID has given us some real opportunities um to use the technology we've got better. Uh and this has enabled us to to make some real sort of step changes in behaviour of usage. So um we are now nearly at sixty percent of our outpatient activity being delivered through either digital telephone uh uh models. Um and whilst we recognise that won't be, we can never do all of our contacts uh in that way, it is really positive for patients who don't want to come into hospital. In some cases, it may may be very difficult for them from a mobility perspective to come into hospital. And we're able to do an awful lot now in a way that we weren't pre-COVID. Um so that's really, really positive. We're going to to build on that. We're going to make that a better and better service o- over time. And and that certainly will help us in delivering services in a in a much more protected way in the future as well.
Thanks very much. Thank you, Chairman. That's very encouraging. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh anyone else, Simon, who wishes to speak?
No, Chairman. Uh that's all the speakers we have uh we have listed.
No, okay, thank you. I'd I'd like to join and thank you very much for what I think is a very comprehensive and optimistic report. I particularly looked on uh one of your very comprehensive charts and wondered how a sudden surge would affect what you've put on what I call page thirty-six, where you hoped by mid-November to have got rid of your backlog, which seems sounds to me an extraordinary achievement and um of non-cancer as well. But I think whilst in no way do we ever want to, some of us locally encourage people if they think they've got something wrong with them, not to delay getting in touch with the health centre or with the um hospitaling authorities. Whilst we wouldn't want to take you away from this vital work which you appear to be moving forward rapidly on, we also find the updates extremely useful. And the question is, and probably through Simon, ask when you can keep updating us on this, because I find this very optimistic information, which we are in a position to share with our um our local people. Simon, if we, what would be a convenient time, do you think, for us to have an up- a further update? And I'm wondering fairly quickly, I would have thought.
Chair, Chairman, so an update on the overall progress of the Restoration and Recovery Plan is that?
Yes.
That's a question of, yeah. Um well, it it may be uh in in two to three months. Um but one of the issues on the paper is that the is that the review of the Grantham Green Site is being considered by the ULHT Board, so it's uh meeting on the sixth of October.
Six, yes.
Uh so and it could be that the committee just focuses on on that item, possibly if the committee wishes to, at its at its next at its next meeting, if
Which is four weeks today, yeah, on thirteen.
Four weeks today, that's correct. Correct, Chairman.
Would that be appropriate? Would everybody support that as an aim? Yes, everyone's going to support that? Perhaps you can all um perhaps you can all wave a hand to give us an idea if you're going to support that. It looks as though it's quite popular, actually. But I think we might say that's what we'll do. And certainly what we were asked to do was to consider the information. Once again, many thanks for what, thanks to me, a remarkable a remarkable step forward you've made in a very difficult position. And I think a lot of us, especially those of us who like me, who lived through a lockdown in the sixties, a lot of us have got our fingers firmly crossed that we don't go back to a very bad position again. And I think the, as I say, we will, if we may, um have a report on the full review of the Green Site uh four weeks today, if that's appropriate. And thank you very much if you can do that. And um we'll hope, we'll we will programme in a further update at either the November or December meeting, Simon. Do you think that's appropriate? Either November or December to for further full update.
I think I think the chairman has just uh frozen momentarily that.
Oh, did I? I'm sorry. Oh, all right. No, I said, could it be November or December when we have a full update on all the matters that we we consider in here?
I think the chairman is just Chairman, is there a problem with your microphone at the moment?
Um, any better? Hello? What's happened?
I can
We can hear him, Simon.
What should I do?
You're coming across fine here, Chairman.
Oh. Right, hello?
We can hear you.
Everybody hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, what we'll do, if we do, we'll have a, we'll, we will just have an update following the um board meeting on the sixth, and that will be on the thirteenth, which is four weeks today. And we'll have a further full update on on how progress is going at appropriate time, probably in two or three months. Is that okay, Mark?
Yes, that would be, that would be fine. And, you know, we'd be happy to come in November if that if that suits. You know, this is fast-moving and
Appreciate that.
We've covered a lot of ground because it's been three months since we last talked to you. So um wha- whatever you think is appropriate, we'd be happy to come back in November.
I I think we'd love that. Thank you very much indeed. And and I'll join everybody else in saying how much we appreciate how you've moved forward and what an excellent job you're doing. And it may be the idea, and I'll having recently been a patient at Adam Brooks, I was impressed by that. And maybe part of our response we consider later tonight to Mr. Argar might well be that we want a bit more funding to update our um IT.
That would always that would always be appreciated.
Think about that one anyway.
Yeah.
Thanks very much indeed, both of you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, have you got your suggested proposals that you wish to put to the committee, uh proposed and seconded?
Uh, right.
Would you like me to, would you like me to read them out?
Oh, yes, thank you.
We've got on here to recall the committee's support for the trust restoration recovery to date of diagnostic cancer treatment and back care. To note that a full review of the Grantham Hospital Green Site is due to be considered by United Lincolnshire Hospital NHS Trust Board on the sixth of October. Um and then to request an update from United Lincolnshire Hospitals NHS Trust on the thirteenth of October, specifically on the Grantham Hospital Green Site.
Yes.
Um and obviously you'll need to have a proposal and a second of that.
And and the further update will be in uh on
And a further update.
November meeting.
Oh, Emma.
Um I've councillor Wood
I can second.
And councillor White seconded. Uh are we going to go through a roll call?
Yes, we have to. Yes, we have to, Chairman. So if you'd just like to go with me.
To you. Thank you. Right.
Thank you, Chairman. If you could just confirm whether you're for or against or abstain, please. Um councillor Bruce.
For.
Councillor Bill Bilton.
For.
Councillor Matthew Fido.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Sandra Harrison.
For.
Uh councillor Rob Kendrick.
For.
Councillor Colin Matthews.
I'm for.
Thank you. Councillor Robin Menchur.
For.
Councillor Angela White.
For.
Councillor Mark Whittington.
For.
Councillor Stephen Woodley.
For.
Thank you. Councillor Linda Wooton.
For.
And councillor Ray Wooton.
For.
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Thank you both very much. Can we then move on, if we may, to agenda item six, which is, goodness gracious me, something that's got rather slowed up in Healthy Conversation two thousand nineteen and next steps. And I rather suspect that John is going to give us a presentation on this and but I think in the current climate, he'll know my obsession on this one has now become generally generally accepted, I think, looking after our own health. But I wish, are you are you abated, John? You are indeed.
Yeah.
Over to you, I think, John, if you can, and update us where we are. And we've all got our fingers crossed on this one. Carry on.
Thank you, Chair. Can can you hear me?
I can very well, thank you.
Lovely, yeah. Great. Thank thank you. And and great to be able to speak to everybody again. I I hope you're all keeping well through this uh very difficult ongoing situation, isn't it? Um thanks for giving me the opportunity just to give you an update on on where we are with with the Healthy Conversation stuff and and particularly, you know, um what the what the next steps may may be. Uh I I I appreciate that um um I I won't I won't necessarily be able to give you the crystal clear clarity. I would like to on one or two points and and you would wish me to because there is some uncertainty. There is some uncertainty over, um you know, the time scales, particularly over the next six months or so in the wake of the 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 pandemic. But let me let me set the scene. Um so you you've got the full report, I think, in front of you uh this morning. A Healthy Conversation two thousand nineteen took place between March and October last year. So it's nearly coming up to a year almost since it it concluded. And I know that the committee um had many uh discussions with myself and my colleagues uh as we set out on this, as we went through the process and as it concluded as 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 well. And a lot of the the comments and input was, well, it was important, but also really helpful in shaping our our thinking. So so thank you again to the committee for for your inputs there. Um the re- the report um that you you have, uh I I I think we pulled together um finally in about February this year. I think it was due to come to the committee in 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 March. And obviously, you know, things haven't haven't progressed. Um so i- i- it's it's an old report in 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 that sense. But we know that um Healthy Conversation was a broad engagement exercise, a listening exercise. And it was to to in broad terms, hear from the people of Lincolnshire about what was important to them about their NHS uh and how they would like to see their their NHS uh progress. Um obviously, uh since uh since we concluded uh the exercise, uh uh I think the the support for the NHS in the county and indeed in the country has has really been very, very evident, was all, uh hasn't it? And and yes, Chair, a lot of the messages that uh you and other members of the committee have have consistently raised were also consistently raised through uh the Healthy Conversation exercise. So things like keeping well, prevention being better than cure, having local care joined up wherever we can, uh having a concern for health inequalities, um uh uh using digital and and telephony services um more. Uh concerns for mental health, obviously, there's some discussion about the configuration of some hospital services as well. And all of that played out in the context, as we know, that the size of our county, the variations across the communities we serve, our geography, our demography, uh uh travel and transport and 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 all of the rest of it. What we actually did with that feedback at the time um is that all of that um uh helped shape uh uh the development of our long-term plan. Uh and you may recall that we and other, every other part of the NHS in the country was actually due to publish a long-term plan uh at the, towards the end of of the calendar year two thousand nineteen. Um we weren't able to do that initially because of the the election and perda and then uh because of of coronavirus. Um so um where we are now is that we are um going to be refreshing our strategic thinking um about uh our long-term plan, taking on board all of the advice and information that we received from the people of Lincolnshire and our partners and the committee. Uh and also, we will incorporate into our thinking all of our experience and reflections over the past six months. So so there clearly is, I think, now, uh for example, a much wider availability of digital uh 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 communication and liaison uh available for 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 people through GP surgeries, for example. There is a massive current concern about mental health. Um but clearly, um uh we are very worried about what we've seen in terms of the the county's mental health so far. Um the impacts it's had on care staff, uh people have been bereaved, uh concern about increases in, for example, domestic abuse. But going forward, uh there are there are some real concerns about children and young people's mental health uh and concerns for the for the economic impact of Uh, and concerns for the, for the economic impact of coming off furlough and all of that. And what that might mean for a lot of the people we, we serve. So mental health is a, is a massive concern, um, for us. I think we've also learned more about the importance of joint working with our partners in the care home sector, uh, for example, as well. Uh, so where I'm going, chairman, with that is, um, we will, um, if other pressures allow, be refreshing our, our long-term planned thinking over the course of the next six months. I think all of, all of the advice we got from, from the people of Lincolnshire will continue to be a fundamental part of, of, of that. Keeping well, health promotion, health inequalities, mental health, all the stuff we, we've discussed. Um, uh, and, um, we clearly will, will be looking to, 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 to publish something in an updated shape, um, uh, uh, I would imagine in, in, in early spring next year. But we clearly need to, to know, you know, see how the next six months play out for us. So that's the, that's the general position. I know that there's, there's obviously an interest in where we are um, within that with, uh, the, the, uh, hospital, the thinking about the structure of hospital, um, services. Um, uh, clearly, um, through Healthy Conversation, we highlighted, uh, eight hospital services in Lincolnshire that we felt that there, there was a real need for us to, 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 to review and, uh, and, and reconfigure. Um, uh, and we discussed that, we've discussed that on, 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 on many occasions. Um, uh, 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 we are now in a place where of those eight services, uh, it's clear that four of them should be progressed, uh, ahead of the other four. Um, for a variety of technical reasons, capital money availability and a few other points. So the four that we, um, are, are looking to, to progress are the three relating to, to Grantham Hospital. So that, those are the changes around, um, urgent and emergency care, uh, around an elective centre of excellence. Uh, and, uh, how we'd like the, the medical bed services to, to evolve there. Um, plus, uh, the, uh, 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 proposals around stroke care uh, between Boston and, and, and Lincoln. And, and you'll recall that there's a very strong case uh, for consolidation of those, those services to deliver better outcomes for, for, for patients. Those are the four of the eight that we are looking to, to bring forward, um, first. Um, when Andrew Morgan and I, um, spoke to the committee a couple of months ago, we absolutely emphasised that the temporary changes at Grantham Hospital, as I'm sure you've touched on it on your, on your previous item, are absolutely that they are temporary changes. And that any, uh, proposals to change, to significantly change hospital configuration, um, permanently do require a public consultation exercise, and it is the CCG's responsibility to, to, to lead that. Um, so, um, what we are doing at the moment is that we are progressing um, a lot of detailed work with NHS England, uh, uh, which is described under a process known as the pre-consultation business case. Uh, we cannot go out to public consultation until we have had the green light from NHS England to do so. Um, uh, and we are in active, ongoing discussions with NHS England about that. Um, I am not currently able to share with the committee what the time scale will be for that, uh, process to conclude. Uh, because I don't know. It's subject to, to quite a number of factors. Uh, and of course, not least, um, the, uh, the coronavirus, um, uh, situation. But I think we've, we're all agreed that, that this has gone on too long. Um, people need certainty, not just the people we serve, but obviously the staff working in the service and the partners who, who, who work with us. Um, and, uh, we are pushing as hard as we can with NHS England in the current circumstances, um, to, uh, go through the pre-consultation business case process with them. Um, to get the green light from them that we can then move forward into the public consultation stage. Um, uh, clearly one would hope that we could achieve that, i.e. get the green light from them before the end of this calendar year. Uh, but, um, I'm not, I couldn't say that's, that's a certainty, far, far from it. Um, but so perhaps I'll, I'll, I'll pause there, chairman. So Healthy Conversation last year, a huge amount of, uh, uh, information and advice came out of that, was reflected in the report. That influenced our long-term plan. We're refreshing our long-term plan in the light of COVID. Um, uh, and that will incorporate the advice from Healthy Conversation and the learning that we're going through at the moment. Uh, and in terms of the acute services changes, I provided an update on the, on the process. Um, and, and where we are. So I'll, I'll pause there, Chair. I'm very happy for us to take questions.
I've got several questions, but I'll leave mine until after. Who've we got? Simon, who'd like?
Uh, Chairman, we've got six, uh, six councillors, six members of the committee have indicated we've got, in this order, Counselor Ray Wootton, Counselor Mark Whittington, Counselor Matthew Fido, Counselor Linda Wootton, Sir Brian Wookiee and Counselor Angela White. Sorry, did you get those? I was reading too quick.
I've got them all right. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
So I think Ray, over to Ray first, if I may.
Thank you very much, Stephen, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, John.
Morning, Ray.
Um, John, I read the report, the, uh, your final report, and I'll be quite honest with you. The impression that I got was that you didn't really listen to the people of Grantham and surrounding districts and that what you're proposing really is your preferred option, which is an urgent treatment centre. There was no indication I could see in the report of the, the fact that we've had a number of rallies throughout the town. Uh, we've also had 60,000 petitions going to Downing Street. And I, I, I just couldn't understand, if you go, look back at the shaping house of Mr. Stevens several years ago, we had 3,600 responses for just, for that area alone. Yet you've only got 649 responses Lincolnshire wide. Do you think that's a true reflection of what people are really thinking about their hospital services? Because I think everybody in the county should be asked their opinion. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Okay, that, thank you, Ray. I, I mean, I accept the points that you, that, that, that you make. Uh, clearly, as you, as you say, there's been significant, um, uh, petitions, uh, lobbying and, uh, and, and, uh, 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 position presented on behalf of the people of, of Grantham and, and, um, from the people of Grantham as well. So I absolutely ac- accept that. Um, in, in, in terms of the report, uh, that was put together by the team who undertook the Healthy Conversation exercise. Uh, and, uh, I know they've, they've made every effort to, to try to, to, to represent uh, what we heard and the feedback in a, in a very straight, uh, uh, and, and open, um, way. Obviously, the, the exercise took place across the whole of the county. Uh, we were at it for six months. It, you know, we, 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 uh, uh, did, uh, publish, you know, advance, advertise it. Uh, and it was a county-wide, uh, exercise. And I know that you yourself and uh, did, did attend the events in, in, in Grantham. Um, I think the, the, um, uh, uh, clearly as far as the proposed changes at Grantham go, I can only, I can only repeat really, Ray. Um, until we get, this, this was a listening exercise. We worked hard to listen. Uh, but until we get into a, a, a proper, um, oh, I've, I've lost you. Can you still hear me?
I can hear you, John.
Okay. Until we're able to have a, a, a full public consultation, uh, exercise, um, uh, uh, we won't be able to get into the next stage of, of that, uh, that debate uh, and, and consideration with the people of, of Grantham. Um, uh, and, and I, I'm as keen as is Andrew Morgan, I think, as everybody uh, to get on to that, that stage as quickly as we, as we can.
I mean, John, Chairman, if I may, I mean, 1,192 days have now passed since the temporary overnight closure of Grantham A and E. That's four years. And we've heard today from the minister that he's saying that your responsibility, your responsibility as a CCG to provide these services, not the government. So what do you say to that, Colin?
Uh, what, what has been? It, it, it has been over four years, hasn't it, Ray? Uh, and I, I can only, uh, you, a- again, repeat, um, what Andrew and I said to you recently. We, we absolutely accept that it is, um, have been going on too long and that people need, need certainty. Um, uh, uh, I mean, the sooner we can get to the public consultation exercise, the, the better, I think, for, 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 for all of us.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mark, Mark Whittington, I think, next. If you're, if you're back.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Chairman. Morning, John. Um.
Morning, Mark.
Thanks, uh, thanks, thanks, uh, thanks for the report. I, I just want to say I, I do support the, the comments that Counselor Ray Wootton has, uh, as, as said, uh, um, previously regarding Grantham Hospital. It has been a very, very long time. And I think the people of Grantham now, we, we just need some clarity really um, about what's, what's happening. So on that basis, um, obviously I welcome your, your comments that you are progressing the three options relating to Grantham Hospital. Um, and, and they're going to be, o- obviously along with the stroke services and those, those four are gonna, are, are, are gonna take the immediate priority. And I appreciate that, um, you know, you have to go through this procedure with NHS England to agree the timetable. Uh, it would be useful if you could keep us updated with, with progress on that because I really do think that the people of Grantham now just really do need some, some, some clarity and a final, and a final decision on this. Um, so I, I won't say any more than that be- because I think on Grantham Hospital, because I think Ray, your exchange with, with Rex covered all that sort of stuff. But what I wanted to do is to sort of get back in, to, to a more general sort of specific, um, general thing, uh, matter regarding the plan. Obviously, the Healthy Conversation, you know, it, it's now a year since the consultation actually finished. And a lot of, you know, exercises that went on across the county, various different formats were actually undertaken. Um, and obviously potentially, you know, a lot of people, residents came along, engaged at that stage. And really because, and you've mentioned the reasons, you know, um, you know, you know, you know, there was the Pirda because of the election, then we were going to COVID. And I'm just wondering, a year on, those residents who might have sort of, you know, been part of the conversation a year, maybe even 18 months ago, have probably now sort of forgotten that, well, not forgotten, but it's in the past. I'm just wondering what you could do kind of now, the things potentially are moving towards, moving forward, to actually re-engage with residents of Grantham, just to kind of remind them, update us as to where we are. And I mean, in the past, I, I have mentioned it before, the, the possibility of you writing to every resident of Lincolnshire, um, as part of this. I'm just wondering if there may be some mileage in that, just a mail shot, to just remind people as to, as to where we are. Just, just sort of get them, get them to kind of re-engage again. So they, they kind of think, well, oh, yeah, we were part of this process a year ago. It's, it's good that we know it's, it's potentially going forward. Um, you've referred in some of your comments to, I guess, the phrase is the new normal. And potentially, you know, post-COVID, things are, things are going to change, I, I guess. And it's good that you are refreshing your strategic thinking around this because I think I, I certainly know, I, I sit on, on both the county and the district council and certainly LCC and SK. We're doing a similar exercise in terms of looking how we provide services and what normal's going to be going forward. And you refer to increased use of, uh, digital and channel shifts. But again, I come back to, to, to something I read, and again, this was in The Telegraph a couple of days ago about, um, some potentially, some GPs have been, have been kind of not threatened, but uh, some directive gone down to say that they ha- that those who have been operating, um, telephone uh, consultations and kind of Zoom-type consultations. And I've been told, actually, you can't do this or you might, you may lose your, your registration. It was, it was in The Telegraph a couple of days ago because, because for me, actually, I think that if there's some patients, especially if they're working away, you know, out of the area of their GP, it would be great if, if they knew, or, or, oh, I'm, I, I I still gotta work today because of 10 o'clock GP or it, it's gonna ring me or I can have a Zoom meeting with him. So I think, and I'm just a bit of clarity around that because obviously for some people, it's not gonna work. You know, you, you might have, uh, people who are not okay with technology or have poor broadband connection, that sort of stuff. But certainly channel shift where we can use it, I think, is really important because I think that could actually improve the efficiency of a lot of our services. So just some, so just some comments on that. And in terms of, um, the long-term plan, what, I mean, I know you can't give specifics, but I've kind of lost sense of which plan we're currently working to because it seems to be over the last five years, there's been seven different plans from nationally, from, from the NHS and also locally, your plan. So just a little bit of comments around which plan we're currently working towards. And I know you're a little bit with, with some, with the timings, but just a general indication of, of, of timings going forward would be quite useful. So thanks, uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman, and thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank, thank you, Mark. Can I, can I make a few comments in relation to, 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 um, three points there? Um, I think, I think your point about how we can update everyone is, is, it, it is, is a very valid one in, in, indeed, and, and how we can best do that and the, and the time, timing uh, uh, in, in which we could do that as well. Um, you, you may be interested to learn that, um, over the course of probably the next six to eight weeks. We will be, uh, we certainly intend to at the moment, um, uh, commencing a, a, a campaign, a communications campaign, uh, in Lincolnshire for, for, for the people we serve. Really to try to give them a few sort of key bits of, of advice and support on, on, on how to support the NHS, um, uh, and ensure the NHS is there for them over the next six months. So, um, messages like, um, uh, yeah, um, uh, 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 do all you can to look after your own health. Messages like, um, uh, if you feel you need advice of the GP, uh, please, please phone. Uh, don't turn up at the surgery, phone, uh, and, you know, you'll be, you'll be, uh, you know, uh, processed by, by, by the staff there. And if you need to be seen, you will be seen. Uh, things like, uh, if you have an urgent and emergency care concern, uh, please phone 111 in the first instance and your care will be taken, cared of from there. So that's sort of, you know, talk before you, you, you walk bit. Um, so, um, that is what we've got in scope as being a, 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 a key uh, public communications piece coming up shortly. And we'll need to tie that in with things like the flu vaccination campaign. Um, one of the most important things that we can do uh, over the next few months in, in Lincolnshire is ensure the maximum possible uptake of the flu, of the flu vaccination. Uh, you know that there's a big push on this, uh, and that the, 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 the groups that we are aiming to, to vaccinate has been extended by the, by the government. Um, this will be, this will be a massive achievement for us if we can, if we can pull, pull that off. Um, um, you will have seen like I, um, Um um you would have seen, like I, um quite a bit of um uh uh discussion in the media about uh when a COVID vaccine may become available. I have no particular insight into that, but clearly um uh it it's not available at the moment. The flu vaccine is, so we need to get on and 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 get people vaccinated for flu. And then we've created a bit of a space, if you like, that we can progress uh with a COVID vaccine, if and when one becomes uh available. Um the second point is around um GPs and 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 digital channels. Um all I can say is that we are encouraging our GPs in Lincolnshire to continue uh to work digitally wherever they can. If patients need to be seen face to face, then they need to be seen face to face. Um and and as I've just said, we will be pushing with the public, please continue to support the NHS by contacting us by phone or or digitally um first. Um so um and our clinical leads are supporting our GP practices, our eighty-five GP practices in Lincolnshire in 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 doing that. So uh the 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 point about um uh whether GP's registration was was a would be potentially under threat, I'm I'm not cited on. All I can all I can say is that NHS England, as well as ourselves here in Lincolnshire, are pushing and supporting uh digital first wherever we can for our for our patients. And finally, just in terms of the long-term plan, I I know what you mean, Mark. Um uh the world is is moving on so quickly, isn't it? Um so back in um uh January twenty nineteen, uh the uh government issued a um uh 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 a national long-term plan and required each of the systems, which Lincolnshire is one, uh to produce a local one. Uh so we did produce ours in the autumn of twenty nineteen. So again, you know, getting on for ten or eleven months ago now. Uh into that, we built all of the feedback we'd received from Healthy Conversation uh 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 as well as advice and support from from our partners and and others locally. Um we were ready to 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 get that out and published. Uh we weren't because of able to because of Pirda and then coronavirus. Um I think a lot of what we've got in that plan still stands today. Um prevention being better than a cure, helping people to self-care, uh boosting integrated care locally. Uh but we we do need to refresh it in the light of um uh uh of our of of the pandemic. So it's that plan, Mark, that I'm talking about as being being refreshed. But in 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 very simple terms, the NHS, like like all organisations, public and private, uh do need to have a a a plan in terms of where they're going over the over the coming coming years. Uh and we do need to to conclude that process and and bring that bring that forward. But when we do, I don't think there will be any surprises uh in it, because we've discussed it um so so openly across the county uh with the committee and with other partners. Thank you, Chair.
Chairman. Chairman.
Yeah.
Uh can I just uh s- uh add councillor Stephen Woodley to your list of speakers? Sorry, just to pass that one on, but I can acknowledge that uh request.
Yeah, yeah, well done.
Thank you, Chairman.
Can I? Thanks, John.
I think Matthew's next, will you?
Um I think I'm trying to turn it. Oh, there we go.
You're you're there, yeah.
Good morning, Chairman. Good good morning, group. And so I attended one of the um the Healthy Eat- uh Healthy Conversation events, the um my question is about healthy eating as well, actually, to be fair. Um at at the Sinsell Bank um stadium in Lincoln. Um and there were some really, really positive things being discussed, brought into another another number of councillors there, um including councillor Kendrick. Um one of my key areas of interest is um how Healthy Conversation is sort of targeting the the sort of the low-hanging fruit about how people can self-help to ultimately, you know, save the NHS, you know, time, money, um and effort in things such as, for example, stopping smoking, um curbing excessive drinking um and curbing, you know, excessive and unhealthy eating. One of my key statistics, I remember from about twenty fourteen, I think it was, when I used to work as a nightclub promoter, is that nearly three million pounds per year gets wasted by people unnecessarily using A and E in Lincolnshire for anything and everything, when these things could be avoided. Now, there's this seems to be this counterculture movement at the moment where people are saying, oh, we need to celebrate body pos- pos- body positivity, I should say, which is brilliant, because people do come in all shapes and sizes, but there needs to be a point at which we say this isn't healthy, and people are calling it out for being fat-phobic. Now, I, you know, I'm getting unnecessarily close to, you know, in the ninety to a hundred kilo mark, and I've got to a point where I have told myself, right, I need to really sort myself out, because I'm getting out of breath just playing forty-five minutes of football. What are we doing um in order to try and hit people with this with this low-hanging fruit of talking about helping people stop smoking, helping people eat healthier, lead more active lifestyles, you know, promoting proper body positivity, um you know, making people aware of the sugar and salts that they have in their diets. I know this is something that um councillor Bruce is very keen on, you know, on his constantly saying against fizzy drinks, um for example, and, you know, encouraging people to take part um in healthy things such as grassroots football that I do myself, you know, and how where this plays in with the rule of six that he that is now coming in as well.
Yeah, some some great.
Over to you, John. John, what I said at one of the events as well.
Yeah, yeah, some some really great points there. Uh and and of course, this is this is one of those things that, you know, if there was an easy answer, we would have found it and done it by now. And when I, when when I'm speaking with 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 GPs and their teams out 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 there, uh and I look at things like the the rates of diabetes in 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 the in the county, um up in up in the Mabel Thorpe patch, actually, we've we've got that that area has the highest diabetes, you know, highest rate of diabetes of anywhere in England. Here in Lincolnshire, um we've got something like just over, I think it is, off the top twenty, just north of twenty percent of children entering primary school for the first time uh in a uh, you know, in a in a at an unhealthy weight. I mean, this is, what, five-year-olds, isn't it? I mean, this is a, this is a, this is a massive concern for us all, and and does require a, you know, comprehensive uh approach from 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 all sorts of authorities and people. Um this is almost a question for our director of public health, Derek Ward, uh rather than than obviously putting it to me to myself. Um uh but I know that that the public, our public health team um have a a very significant programme going on. I just can't recall what it what it is. It is the, it is particularly the stopping smoking and um and and sort of healthy drinking and eating campaign. I'm sorry, it's just it's just gone out of my mind what 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 we call call that. Um uh I I know that that's been in place for for a couple of, that's it, thank you, the one U Lincolnshire um uh 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 program. And and it might be that that's something that the the committee uh wants to hear hear more about. Obviously, we have the Health and Wellbeing Board, don't we? Which councillor W- Wally chairs, I've just actually moved into the vice chair of that, uh which has responsibility for um having oversight of and trying to promote uh health and wellbeing in the county. And there's a massive amount of really good work that is happening there. Uh we've got partners, for example, in inactive Lincolnshire, who I understand are uh, you know, have been scoping out a sort of let's move Lincolnshire campaign to try to just get levels of activity up or levels of inactivity down um uh in the county. So there's there's a there's a vast amount of work going going on there. Um uh but I I'll 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 leave it there, but some some great points made, I must say.
Okay. Um Linda. Linda Woodton, I think, next.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, John.
Morning, Linda.
It's nice to see you and to hear you and to be able to speak to you, John. Um thank you for your paper, a really interesting read. And I know you can't answer one of my questions is, uh, when will this be going out to consultation? Because you've already established that with another speaker. And I do apologize, I'm another Grantham councillor, and I know you must get fed up with us all banging on. And I've been to many of your engagement sessions, always very interesting. But you've just said it's a listening exercise, and if I didn't bring this up, much as I admire you, John, I would get shot by the residents of Grantham. Were you actually listening? Because we didn't say that we wanted a UTC unit. We wanted our A and E back. And I know that we've been told it's a temporary measure that's what's going on at Grantham, and it will be reviewed. But then there's the other situation, isn't it? Because we're always told that we never actually had an A and E service, which, you know, it's really difficult for the people of Grantham to understand that fact. Um also, uh consultation, the feedback that you've got, you only got six hundred and forty-nine responses, which I think is quite sad, because the population of Grantham is forty-four and a half thousand people, extended to about hundred and twenty-nine thousand, taking all the villages, et cetera. But then I read in your stats, which are brilliant, that you've had sort of a fifty-four thousand website hits and another hundred and seventy-five thousand sort of contacts with media, et cetera. So I think it's really sad that you haven't had more of a response. Um also, going back to, you know, I understand it. I've been at lots of these health meetings about sort of looking after ourselves, and I go back to the days of um Jane Lewington, and she was promoting then that uh, you know, we should have neighbourhood teams. And it's not that long ago that they actually came on stream. And I I I think NHS England is rather naughty, and I think they're steering you to actually streamline ULHT to have one sort of super hospital and taken away services from sort of our site at Grantham. Um and then also, um people that do need the A and E service, you know, as councillors, we're getting complaints all the time about the exorbitant cost, somebody's taken to hospital, and then it's getting home, or somebody has to go in a taxi, and it's costing them sixty-odd pounds if they've gone through the nine-nine-nine service. So I'd just like some comments from you, if you don't mind, on that, please. Uh and then uh mental health, John, you've mentioned the mental health, which is very in vogue at the moment, uh the implications for your staff and your members. And we all admire you all, our NHS, you know, it it's sacred to us, and we appreciate everything that they've done for us. But then can I bring it back into the public domain, mental health? Can you just tell me what services there are? I know you've got a mental health nurse now in uh Lincoln Hospital, possibly Boston. And we might even have one on our UTC down the road here. But um what facilities are there for people uh attending with mental health issues, please? Because um you s- you mentioned in your report crisis teams, where are those based? And and that's about all, I think, Chairman. Thank you, John.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Chair. Thank thank you, Linda. It's it's great to see him speak with you, you too.
Bless you.
Um um complete, complete, the respect, you 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 know what he has said in terms of a bit, y- y- your role clearly is to advocate on behalf of of the people of 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 Grantham um or your constituency. So um uh uh it would be great, wouldn't it, if we could actually arrive at a point where we've all you you know, moved on with certainty in terms of the 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 future shape of of hospital services at 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 Grantham. Um and and I'm I'm sure you look forward to that point, um as as much as I do. Um uh thanks very much for your for your for your comments. Um uh uh I I I mean, in 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 a sense, I I think I and uh my chief executive colleagues, our boards, um and our our staff, uh listen very, very carefully uh to the to the to the people we we serve. Um obviously, uh you will you will make your own judgments in terms of what you 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 see in 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 relation to 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 that. Um but the uh yourselves and and the people of Grantham have um have uh uh, you know, consistently, certainly over my time around here over the past four years, and I know prior to that, um consistently uh ensured that that your views um were 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 put forward. Um uh and I I can just say that uh we've paid really, really good attention to 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 that. Uh obviously, there's a there's a separate issue, which I know you'll appreciate, about the extent to which um uh uh the 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 NHS uh is able to uh respond to the to the wishes of uh local people, be they in Grantham or or anywhere else. But that's a slightly different matter from are we, are we listening carefully to what what people are saying? And I I believe that we we absolutely uh are. Um uh in terms of um neighbourhood teams, uh they've now been in place in the county for, gosh, again, maybe three or four years, and they've gone through their own uh uh evolution. You you may be aware that last year, it was July last year, uh something called a primary care networks became established as well. So these are groupings of GP practices. There are fourteen such groupings in the in in the county. And this is about GP practices working together to support each other and to provide services uh to uh uh by by joining up a bit um uh and working in a collaborative way, which they may not be able to to provide individually. Uh and 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 of our fourteen PCNs, uh they're all they've all made pretty good progress, uh actually. Um some inevitably, um you know, a little bit further down the the track than 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 others. But there are many services and ways of working uh in place today that weren't in place, you know, twelve months ago, uh in relation to 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 primary care networks. And much of it is because our primary care networks are working really tightly with their local neighbourhood teams as well, as almost um whilst they're two slightly different entities, it is it's essentially one team working together uh at a very local uh integrated level. And um they will shortly, I know, be be issuing a uh I'll publish, you know, an annual report, the primary care networks, uh being able to 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 describe what they've been able to do in local communities across the county for the people they they serve. And I'm sure that will become available to the committee in in due course. In terms of mental health, Linda, um I I'm not as close to this as obviously our colleagues in LPFT uh will will be. So I don't have the precise details, but I do know that there are, I think they're called mental health liaison services uh 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 available alongside A and E um uh to support A and E. Uh and obviously, um there's quite a number of people who go to A and E in significant mental health distress. Um uh in terms of the crisis mental health teams, my understanding is that they are available. Those services are available to people across the county. Um the exact configuration of them, um I'm sorry, I don't have that information available. But I'm sure our colleague in LPFT, I think you've 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 had in, was it the last time you met? Would be be happy to share more information with you about the exact configuration of those those services. Um we, as a CCG, are under a a national requirement to spend a certain amount of our uh total budget on mental health. It's called the Mental Health Investment Standard. Uh and that that has to to rise at a rate And that, that has to, to rise at a rate greater than our total allocation rises on a, on an annual basis. And I think we've got a good track record of, of, of meeting that standard. And equally in Lincolnshire, last year, we secured ten million pounds roughly of additional funding from NHS England. To, to, to do some specific mental health transformation work. There are a variety of programmes that, 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 that make that up. Some of it's to support digital, some of it is particularly to, to enhance services for homeless people, for example. And again, our colleagues in, in LPFT, I'm sure, would be happy to share those details with the, with the committee in due course. Thank you.
Thank you for that, John. That's brilliant. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. And good morning, John. Very pleased to see you here as CCG Chief Executive. And we look forward from Health Watch, working with you in the future. Just three points really, some of which I think have been covered partly already. One is the future developments that you were talking about, particularly in secondary care. And reference in your document about the capital costs and the fact that that seemed to be used as one of the criteria for going ahead or not. Now, I can understand that, but obviously that has to be taken into account. But I think what we are a bit concerned about, that there are actually quite urgent developments that are necessary, but do need some capital costs. And hematology is one, and stroke developments at Lincoln are another. And probably other developments at Lincoln, as it tends to be the preferred option for a central service in the county, which is controversial in itself. But on a lot of rational grounds, that probably is going to happen. So I just want to make sure that, that the CCG will pursue this to make sure that the ones where there is a capital cost, there may be some delay, but they're not just kicked into the long grass. While the other ones go ahead. The, the second one, which is regarding digital. And, and I agree with most of what has already been said about this. And it is obviously a great opportunity, but I think we have to keep a balance. We are just beginning to get a few negative feedbacks from primary care and from some GP practices. Not from the practice, but from the patient. Now, it may well be, I think, that this may be a, a matter that the, the committee will want to consider in the near future. Or it may come up later. But there's just a few sort of amber signs around that people are finding it quite difficult to access their GP by all the various new processes. And there is almost an encouragement for them to, to bypass and go to A and E or some other recourse. So I think this is, I think, something that, that is going to be needed and to be looked at. Because digital is fine in many cases, but in many other cases, and I speak obviously from personal previous professional experience. You cannot actually dodge a physical examination. And if you do, sooner or later, you're going to come a cropper. Even with sophisticated investigations, which are also an expensive alternative in some ways. So I think there's just a little bit on that. But I suspect we may be talking about this more in the next month or two. So I won't say any further than that at the moment. But I think we've got to get a balance. Digital is fine, but not always, and not always for elder people either. Third one, really, I think we've more or less covered. I think everybody is concerned about the consultation and the, the delay in consultation. I mean, we, you know, we've had engagement, we've had conversations. I think the poor old public are getting really quite confused about which is which. And when they're going to go to the much more formal process of, of consultation. Although you say it's two nineteen, it's actually about five years since this process first began, to my personal knowledge and yours as well. And it's just changed its name every couple of years or so. But we're still going along the same basic road and we still haven't got to the consultation. I really can understand the, the great frustration from representatives from Grantham in particular, but other places as well in, in Lincolnshire. So it's really just to reinforce what has been said. But I know we can't squeeze a date out of you, but at least some sort of expectation.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank, thank you, Brian. It's great to see you as, as well, to speak with you again. And I, I, I must say that, that the support from a Health Watch team and the input from a Health Watch team has, has, has been great over the past six months. And I know very, very difficult circumstances for everybody. So please don't hesitate to take that, that, that feedback back to Sarah. And the, the input is, is, is really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
In terms of, uh, uh, the, you, you're quite, let's start again with capital. I, I think we all know that when we look around the NHS estate in Lincolnshire, be that primary care, mental health or our hospitals, whilst some of it actually is, 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 some elements of it are up to date, modern, and I think quite impressive. There are, the vast majority of it isn't really up to, to the standard that we would all, all wish it to, to, to be. We've got a lot of old buildings, haven't we? That we're continuously trying to in, in, in improve. And we ask a lot of our staff working in these facilities as, as well. You're quite right, a key factor in terms of why we have, uh, uh, why we're in the process of progressing four rather than eight schemes at the moment on hospital configuration is because the four that we're progressing require minimal capital, whereas the other four a bit more substantive amounts of capital. And NHS capital has been in very short supply nationally as well as locally for, for quite a number of, of, of years. So there's a, there's a pragmatic reason why it's those four. Because we, we think we can actually get on with those without having to secure significant amounts of capital first. More broadly, there are, there's, there's, I think, reasons to, to be perhaps a little bit more optimistic on the capital front. We know, for example, that last year, Prime Minister announced additional capital for the expansion and developments of, of A and E services at Pilgrim Hospital. And you've probably heard from ULHT, you know, they're, they're working hard on, on, on that. More recently, there's been a national move to end dormitory ward accommodation in mental health services. And, and whilst allocations haven't yet been made, LPFT have been working really hard and trying to secure some money for us in Lincolnshire. Because, again, that's another issue we need to, to address. And the service has received certain sums of what we call COVID capital, short term capital, to help us get through the pandemic situation. But I think you, you, you make a good point in terms of the, the four services that we aren't able to progress at, at the moment. Just to assure you that we are in continued dialogue with NHS England about the capital requirements in the county and the NHS. Whilst I think as previously discussed, I mean, that runs into, to several hundred million in the, in, in, in the county. And of course, we've got to get the balance right between, uh, 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 sort of the capital to, to deal with ongoing maintenance. As well as investing in, 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 in new things. So point very well made. On digital, I think that there's been a massive step forward, hasn't there, for, for us all around digital in the NHS over the past six months? But you're quite right to highlight, there's some, I think, some important downsides as well that we are paying attention to. I think for me, the most significant downside is that, is that health inequalities have become exacerbated through COVID. And, uh, 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 digital access to, to, to services may be a, a, a factor in, in, in that. And that has to be a, a real worry for, for us. In terms of the feedback from, from patients. I'll look forward to, if that's the right phrase, to, to hearing, you know, what Health Watch have gathered in relation to that. But just to confirm, I'm hearing that as well. I'm also hearing it from, from general practices. Because for, for some GPs, they are saying that it's really working well for them personally. But for, for others, there's, they have a strong sense that it's, it's far from, from ideal in terms of, uh, 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 their own, if you like, job satisfaction. So there's, there's a range of experience and perspectives across GPs and their staff, which I, I would expect would, 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 would mirror potentially some of the comments that Health Watch is picking up from, from, from patients. So under the overall sort of position that, that is, I think it's been a major step forward. I think you're right, Brian, to highlight, there are some, there are some downsides that require attention to be, to be paid to them. And for me, this is a short term and a long term issue as well. We need to support patients and the service over the next six months. The last thing we, we want is any difficulties in terms of patients presenting at general practice with, with coronavirus symptoms and potentially transmitting that to, 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 to GPs and staff in, in, in primary care. That would obviously potentially, you know, in theory, take out, so to speak, a lot of, a lot of capacity. So we need to be really, really careful in terms of how, and we are being in terms of how we manage this in the, in, in the short term. Whilst having in mind to what, whatever the, the, the new normal model will be. Paying attention to, to the downsides of it. And as I say, for me, the most significant question is whether, whether people who are suffering the most in terms of health inequalities. That suffering has, in a sense, been exacerbated. And the lack of access, if that's the right terminology, to, to digital solutions is, is, is a factor in that. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Over to Andrew, I think. You're next.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say how much I support the comments by councillor Fido. And there are programmes available to stop smoking, lose weight and eat well, drink less and move more. And I think this would be a positive way to save money. And I think we could do more, but political correctness is holding us back. The points I wanted to make were about the market responses on page hundred and six, hundred and seven. There are, aren't very many responses, but they single out young people. So I'm wondering, is, are these results skewed because the comments were made by older people? I don't know whether you've got any evidence of who made the responses. Because I think still, the major public health problem in this county is adult obesity and diabetes. So I would think that we need to take measures to persuade overweight people that it's not good for their health and that they can help the National Health Service by living healthier lifestyles.
Thanks. Some great, great points there. I certainly don't have that information immediately available in terms of, of, of the mark, the points you made about the market. My, uh, uh, my recollection of people who attended events is that it tended to be more middle aged to, to, to older people rather than, than younger people, I would, I would say. Obviously, there's a separate debate, isn't there, about health in the, in the school's curriculum as well? That, that is, is, is connected to that. The points you made about adult obesity and diabetes, I, I, I think, absolutely spot on. I can, you know, I don't want to repeat the comments I, I, I made, I made earlier. We do need to do all we can to persuade people to, 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 to care for themselves. And in doing so, not only is that right for them, but obviously it's, it's positive in terms of the impact on, on, on the NHS as well. And I'd love the NHS to become much more of a national health service than a national illness response service. We've spoken before about our responsibility to, to try to be much more proactive in helping people to manage their health. Rather than just responding to demand when, when things go wrong for, for, for people. So I, I'll, I'll probably pause there, but how we do this in Lincolnshire is, is in many ways for, for us to work through together with our, with our, our, our professional advisers and staff in, in, in public health. It requires an effort across a wide range of partner organisations and, and local communities, schools. And obviously, uh, 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 you know, if the concern is, of course, that, that some of these points you've raised around alcohol, um, uh, obesity. And actually, people's overall mental health have potentially become exacerbated over the past six months as, as well. Shall I, shall I pause there? Thank you.
I'd just like to make one point, and it's not a politically correct point. The problem is that a lot of healthcare workers and pharmacists are themselves overweight. And so I think this is a real problem because it's like asking somebody covered in tattoos to stop, to stop having tattoos. You can't ask another person to do something you're not prepared to do yourself.
Yeah, there's a little element of truth in that. There's more than an element.
I don't expect you to answer that, but this is just a comment.
Okay, thanks. Thank, thank you, Andrew. Stephen, I think you're next.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not sure, I, I might, can you see me? All right. You can see me now, I think, probably. Can you see me?
Well, if you press your little camera, we will do. Or we can hear you anywhere, far away.
That's amazing. Okay.
We can see you as well now, so yes, that's all right.
Right, I'll move my. Thank you very much, Chairman. Morning, John. I suppose I just want to pick up first of all on the obesity side of things. I understand, looking at the figures for twenty seventeen and eighteen, that Boston's obesity for year six children was twenty four point six percent. One in four. Serious problem there. I, I haven't any, any more recent figures, so I can't really say whether it's changed any or not, but that's quite a serious issue. I'd like to come and, to, to comment on what Brian Bookie said about GP services and not getting an appointment. It might be worthwhile asking the Sidings Surgery in Boston whether it was a good idea to change their telephone service on Tuesday. Because I ran through twice yesterday. And eventually, when I, when, when, when you go through the system, you know, of various different levels, you got to the point where there was no one here to answer your call. Now, there obviously was somebody there to answer the call and I found out. Now, um, there obviously was somebody there to answer the call and I found out later that they had problems with their telephone service. But it seems to me that if we're going to change your telephone service, don't do it on a day hmm, when, when, when the surgery is open. It would have, it would seem to me to be sensible to make changes like that on Saturday or Sunday when there's nobody around. Because if you're ringing through and you're not problem, it's not a very sensible thing to end up with a situation, there's nobody here to answer your call. Which is not um, good news, is it? Um, they're basically statements. I, I've looked through the, uh, the, the information we had in front of us. Now, I'm, I'm turning to the questions and answers supplied to, supplied by Alison Marriott. Alison Marriott has asked for her options and information to be published. That's page one, three, seven, I think, when the Healthy Conversations. And I have to say that, um, John, I wouldn't be very happy if I were Alison Marriott because I don't think the, the answers actually relate to the questions. I suppose that's a common thing or not, isn't it? When, um, when people ask questions of government organisations, the, the, the answer you get back isn't necessarily related to the question you've asked. Well, I, I, I must admit, I've been looked through this, it's, it's, that the, it's more, more a case of the um, ULHT answering the question it wanted to be asked, rather than answering the question that Mrs Marriott has asked. Uh, and I, I suppose if I just asked one question, picking it out on page one, three, eight. Hmm? Um, ULHT have admitted that a large population of children with heist needs are in this side of the county. And that's quite an important statement, isn't it? And it goes on, the answer basically um, is given that experience continues to be the recruiting staff to Bury Hospital remains difficult. My question to you is, well, what assessment have you done to find out why people don't want to come to Boston and Pilgrim Hospital? What assessment has been done to find out why it is that Pilgrim Hospital is less successful in recruiting staff than perhaps, say, Lincoln or Nottingham or wherever else? And I'll stop there because I don't want to ask a load of questions and, uh, not, you know, and, and, and overrun you. So if I ask that question, what is, what have you done to find out why it is that Pilgrim Hospital finds it difficult to recruit? What have you done? Over to you, John.
John? Thank, thank you, Stephen. Good morning. Uh, oh, my, good afternoon, good afternoon now.
You too.
I, 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 I note the points you made about obesity and about the Sidings telephone service. So, so thank you for, for, for making, making those. Um, in, in, in terms of um, your, your question about an assessment of why Pilgrim is less su, is, well, less successful at recruiting to, to Pilgrim. I, I think I would draw more on, on our evidence rather than an assessment. But clearly, things like um, uh, uh, the, uh, the fact that we haven't got the, that we don't do as much training on the, on, on the nursing of the healthcare professionals uh, in the east of the county in the way that we used to is a key, key factor, I, I, I would say. And you may be aware that we are, we are looking to, 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 to address that positively. Um, I also feel that um, that perhaps Andrew Morgan and our colleagues from ULHT would be better placed than I to talk about uh, their, their uh, their assessment of, of why Pilgrim is more difficult to, to recruit to than, than Grantham or Lincoln. What the factors are, uh, whether it's uh, uh, geography, attractiveness. Um, uh, 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 on, on all, 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 all of that, Stephen. And I also know, and you'll probably be aware, that it's not just ULHT. It's other services, uh, be those GP services, primary care, mental health. And broadly, uh, the, 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 the further you go east in the county, the more challenging it is, I'll make a general statement there, but broadly, the more challenging it is for us to, to, to recruit uh, uh, professionals into, into the east. We do have a piece of work that is ongoing, which is called our, our, our People Plan. Uh, and we're very ambitious uh, about, as you'd expect, growing our own um, in the county generally and in the east in particular. We want to stand up much more uh, 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 training opportunities in the east of the county. Uh, um, our, our office of a grow your own type approach, that's, and that's all uh, are, are a wide range of, 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 uh, of health and care, care professionals. Um, so I'll, I'll sort of pause there. Uh, sorry, the other point to make is clearly um, the NHS in the country um, has had a significant shortfall in its workforce over the past so many years. Uh, certainly, um, last year, it was said that there was a shortfall of over a hundred thousand staff in the NHS in the, in the country. And clearly the commitments have been made to uh, 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 greater, greater capacity in, 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 in medical training. So they've got the medical school at Lincoln. Uh, and we know that the government has made a number of, of commitments around the NHS workforce. Those, of course, always take a lot of time to come, to come through. Um, uh, the, uh, and, and just I, I read the other day um, that the amount of interest there's been in the population, this is in, in England, so uh, uh, in, in, in young people wanting a career in health and care has actually come through the roof over the past six months. So I hope that one of the positives out of this also pandemic will be that um, uh, 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 that we're able to to, to really resolve a lot of the workforce issues we've got in the, in the country. Um, shall I pause there, Chair?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I think, yeah. So, yeah, you'll come back. Yeah, go on.
Yeah, uh, it might be worthwhile writing or contacting the people who've left Lincolnshire um, and Bo, and Boston in particular, who have jobs elsewhere now to ask them, in, you know, in broad terms, what are the positives of working in Lincolnshire? Um, um, at the Pilgrim Hospital and what are the negatives? What were the positives in working for Pilgrim Hospital? And what are the negatives in working for Pilgrim?
I'm a great believer in egg, 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 I'm a great believer in that, yeah.
We need to get to the bottom of what it is that, um, you know, deters people from coming to the Pilgrim Hospital. Because, because throughout the answers, essentially, it comes down to, well, we, you know, people don't come here. And I think probably true of GP services as well as it is of the um, of the, of the hospital services. So we can get what, what it is, is deterring people from coming to Lincolnshire, which is a beautiful county, with grammar schools and, you know, and it's not crowded and lovely clean air and good vegetables. Aren't they brilliant vegetables? Healthy diet, you want it. You don't have to have McDonald's, I'm sorry, you know. You don't have to have hamburgers every day. You can have good decent vegetables. You should have a very hot health opportunity here.
My infant, Stephen, my infant teacher was called Mrs Kill. Mrs Lottie Kill. And when I was six, she said if I didn't eat my greens, my blood would turn white. So I did, and she was absolutely right. It stayed red. So I think, I think, I think a lot of points have come across there, John. And um, I believe the shortage of staff nationally has been evidence that it's coming over the horizon for ten years. I've lost stone and a half during lockdown by doing more gardening than usual, and my flu jab is on Saturday week, so I'm doing my best. But one, one or two points you've made. I've been to a number of your presentations and I'm bitterly sorry about the deep delay to the final consultation because I know you accept what I've said again and again about prevention and, and good health being the key to all this. I have one or two comments to make though. When you talk about consolidation, I think we've got to make sure that both nationally and locally consolidation is all very well, but we have to balance that against the enormous distances within this county, where people have to travel vast distances from, for example, um, Ingamels to Lincoln and um, various other places, enormous distances. Um, and the question of when, when our sector state announces it's down to local decision. Well, we'd like it to be down to local decision, as long as you chuck the money to us to be able to do it effectively. Now, maybe that needs to be our response to, to him, I don't know. Um, I do think though, ultimately, the certainty, when we get the certainty and the full consultation outweighed certainty and a certain future makes it more easy to attract staff than when, when it appeared of uncertainty. And I think the tsunami of mental health, especially amongst younger people, it, when, when it hits us, it'll hit us in a big way. One thing you haven't mentioned about pulling together is something else, I think, that can ease um, primary care and elsewhere, is where we have excellent pharmacies. I've got two first class ones in my own division. They give excellent advice. I'm always advising people to go there. They give jolly good advice. And they do relieve to a certain extent the pressure on primary care and hospitals. So I think we all need to work hard with the pharmacies. But I'm, I'm going to hand over, because we, we, we want to know. And you've said you don't know if it'll be in two thousand and twenty easy, but really, Simon, when do we want to move this one forward, Simon? Because I think it's very important we do.
Thank you, Chair. You said everything I want to say and summed up perfectly. No, 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 no. Thank you, Chairman. You've summed up everything I want to say perfectly. Summed up brilliantly. So thank you very much indeed for covering the other points. We don't, I don't need to say anything more now because you've done my job for me, which is always the best way. Get the family to do all the work.
Chairman, um, before, yeah.
Yeah, before we uh, finish off, councillor Ray Woodson has asked for one further question.
Of course you can, Ray. Come on, come back.
Thank, thank you very much, Chair. I, I, I just have to inform you that I've just demolished six Jaffa cakes, so it's contrary to what you're talking about.
Um, thirty-six for a pound on Longset Market. I'll get you a box.
John, if I could take you back to the Health Conversation, you mentioned the long term plan. Does that long term plan uh, include the aspirations of Jodie Clark fighting for Grantham Hospital desire to have a new hospital on another site in Grantham?
Uh, uh, at the moment, that is not part of uh, uh, the NHS plan. Um, clearly, uh, you know, like yourself, Ray, I'm, I'm aware that, that Jodie is, is, is leading that, that campaign. Uh, and I, I, I think that she, she has uh, contact on an ongoing basis with, with some of my team. Uh, but that is, that is not um, uh, uh, at, at this current point. Um, how can I put it? NHS um, policy or a plan. Clearly it's something that is, that is, that is evolving in people's minds.
So that then, then Chairman, that then answers the question, John, that Gran, the Grantham site is secure.
Do, do you mean the current sites?
The current sites.
Yeah, at the moment, there are, there are, there are no um, proposals to move um, services in Grantham off the current site.
Right. Thank you, Chairman. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Right, um, back to you, Simon, I think.
Yes, um, I think, I think it's really how the, it's a matter for the committee how you would wish to conclude this item. Um, it do, would you be looking for a further update? Clearly, that, that there is no timetable for a, for the consultation. But it's whether you would wish to programme in a further update on the, the the progress with this, or, and, and, and maybe this is something that John Turner could advise on. Um, I think it, it's whether the committee would wish to keep this on their agenda uh, or forthcoming meetings or perhaps in November or December. Um, or, I, I think they say it's a matter for the committee to sort of indicate how they would wish to take this forward.
I certainly think I'd speak for everybody if you say we do want to keep it on the agenda. We do want at least a quarterly report back. And um, I think I'd also want to say, we also want, uh, when we do meet with John, to know if there's anything we collectively as a committee or as individuals representing our areas can do to assist you in moving this forward. For heaven's sake, let us know, because we've all got to pull together for the benefit of the patients and the population of this county. And uh, anything we can do to help, we want to, because we're as frustrated as you are by this almost inevitable delay, but um, one that might go on for some time, yeah. Um, is that, is everybody more or less in agreement with that?
Yes, yeah.
So if we, we could perhaps, unless, unless something start, oh, sorry, hang on. Sorry, interrupted. Um, unless something startling happens that brings forward very rapidly in the near future, if you could come back to us at our meeting in, say, three months' time, I think we'd very much appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Yeah, happy, happy to do that. So, so that would be December. Uh, yes, if there's any change prior to that, um, uh, obviously I'll, I'll ensure people are made aware.
Yeah, and if, and if there's anything we can do as, either collectively or individually, please let us know, because this is frustrating for all of us, you know.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory, Simon?
Uh, Chairman, it's, it, it, perhaps the committee should be indicating if they would wish, if that's satisfactory for them.
Second, you need it second, Chairman.
I've had a proposal, I've had a second for that. So I think it's over, it's over to Katrina saying that we will have a further report in December, and if there's any way that John thinks we can collectively help move this forward, he will let us know. And uh, thank him for his report. So um, if, if, I think it's now for you to put that to the um, roll call. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct, Chairman. So if you're all in favour of that, uh, can I please ask you to say with your for or against, Rob Stain? Uh, councillor Bruce?
Uh, for.
Councillor Bill Bilton?
For.
Councillor Matthew Fido?
For.
Councillor Mrs Sandra Harrison?
For.
Uh, councillor Kendrick?
For.
Councillor Colin Matthews?
For.
Councillor Robin Menshaw?
For.
Councillor Angela White?
For.
Councillor Mark Whittington?
For.
Councillor Stephen Woodless?
For.
Councillor Linda Wootton?
For.
Councillor Ray Woodton?
For.
Actually unanimous then, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Appreciate that. And thank you as well, John, for um, keeping this up to date in such a comprehensive way. Thank you very much indeed.
You're welcome.
And um, okay. If we may then, may we move on now and we're moving on to item seven, which is Lincolnshire Clinical Commission Group. And I have a suspicion that this might be you as well, Chairman.
Yeah, sorry, it's, it's me in my voice again, everybody. I'll, I'll, I'll try to be.
Off you go.
I'll try to be a bit brief for this, 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 this time. So hopefully this is a, this will just be a quick, quick update for, for everyone. Uh, and this was really an item that I think was on the pre, one of the previous meetings that just got back a bit. So the headlines are, obviously we have the new Lincolnshire CCG established on the first of April. Uh, so it replaced the four predecessor CCGs, East, South, South West and West. Uh, I must say, um, uh, that already seems like very, very ancient history when we have four CCGs. Um, we, we are curterminous with the boundaries of the Lincolnshire County Council, which I think is a, is a really positive position to be at. We, our annual budget um, is about one point three billion pounds as a, as a CCG. And obviously we're responsible for uh, using that to commission um, services for our, it's about seven hundred and eighty thousand of a GP registered population across the whole of the, of the county. Um, the role of our new CCG is, is described as, is in bureaucratic terms as a strategic commissioner. Um, I, I think what that means is that the CCG is the only bit of the NHS that has oversight of the whole of the NHS in the county, be that the GPs, the agribusiness, the hospitals, mental health. Um, and also working with us oversight of that and how it interacts with uh, social care services, the voluntary sector and, and so on. So our, 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 our overall role, I think, is to, to orchestrate with others the, the overall integrated combined response of health and care in the county to do three things. Uh, one is to improve the health of people in Lincolnshire. Second is to reduce health. Second is to reduce health inequalities. And finally, to ensure that when people require care, it's actually the highest possible quality, we can make it. I think those are the three reasons why I get out of bed in the morning and I think all of us in the NHS do. We want to improve health, reduce health inequalities and ensure that people get great care when they need it. And obviously, the CCG came into existence on the first of April. So we've been very low profile, as you'd expect in terms of us being a new organisation. Almost, you know, who cares in the middle of a pandemic? So our emphasis has been on trying to support the NHS and our partners throughout the pandemic period. And obviously, we've got at least another six months of that ahead of us. Nonetheless, we are established as a board and an organisation. Our board is meeting on a monthly basis in public. We have a chair in Sean Lyons, who's got a background in engineering, management and leadership in the steel industry. He used to be site director at Scunthorpe and was previously chair of the Shrewd Forest Trust as well. And we have seven non-executive directors with a really great mix of background and experience. Some from within the health service, some from the broader public sector and some from the private sector. On executives, obviously, they've got me. I also have a new director of finance and a new director of nursing. Now, all of those posts, the executive posts, the non-executor, the chair, were appointed to following international processes. The CCG, we are working on four, basis of four localities, which are actually the geographical footprints of our predecessor CCGs. And each of those has a clinical lead who's a GP and a chief operating officer supporting them as well. And also, our board has the input from Dr David Boldy as our secondary care doctor. Dr Boldy is a physician, retired physician, a very eminent physician in the local Lincolnshire system, having worked at Pilgrim Hospital for many a long year. We also have Councillor Sue Woolley as chair of the Health and Wellbeing Board, Derek Ward, our director of public health, and Sarah Fletcher, chief executive of Health Watch, in attendance at our board meetings. We actually have our annual general meeting Thursday next week. So that's where we are.
At four o'clock, yes.
Indeed, yes. In terms of, so those are kind of headlines in terms of, you know, we're up and running and we're getting on with our stuff as best we can. Our work programme has been primarily focused on supporting the Covid response. It's obviously been massive for us all. And I think for the next six months, that's going to be the case as well. And I'll not go through all the different elements of that. But you will know that there's a significant amount of work to be done across the broader health and care system to keep everybody as safe and well as we can. And just the final point to say that the Lincolnshire system, like other systems in the country, are being in the courage to become what's called an integrated care system by April next year. We're working hard on that. We are seeing that as a joint endeavour, working in partnership with health, local governments, the care sector and the voluntary sector in the county. And we are currently on track in terms of that process. But clearly, everything has to take its place at the moment in terms of protecting lives and keeping the health service functioning as best we can for the people of the county. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, John. And that's very encouraging, I think, too. And we were, as you know, supportive of the idea of four becoming one. Anybody wish to speak, Simon?
Chairman, councillor Mark Whittington and councillor Stephen Woodlett have requested to speak. Thank you.
Okay, Mark first, then Stephen.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr Chairman. John, I suspect, because we were speaking about this in the past, that both of us, I think, joined the health service many, many years ago. You're still in it. I'm out of it now. I joined in 1985 when we still had health authorities. But over all the years since then, we've seen health authorities, I mean, I just take Lincolnshire and hopefully get the terminology right. Because I've worked in other parts of the country, but in Lincolnshire, we've got a health authority that I believe then became six PCTs. Then we had a Lincolnshire PCT many years then. We went down to four CCGs. Now we're back up to a Lincolnshire CCG. It always seems to me that there's always been this tension, this dynamic tension between two almost conflicting viewpoints as how to run the services. That you need an overall strategic vision for an area, the county. But then you've always got this other view that you then need sort of local responsiveness and local awareness. And I think that's been part of the dynamic that's resulted in this smaller units than bigger units and smaller units than bigger units. So I'm delighted that within the CCG, you've got four localities. Because I'm guessing that by doing that, you're hoping to try and address this tension that's been in there for decades, really. So just your views around that and an almost impossible question. I know this is an impossible question, John. Do you think this is it? Do you think we finally hit upon a model that's going to last for a long time? Because, you know, all this uncertainty, it's constant reorganisation. And I know it's a difficult question, almost impossible question. So, and you liked the comments about, you made about working with other providers with local authorities and the care sector. So I think that's really, really important. If we're going to develop, you know, proper cradle to grave, primary care rights for secondary to tertiary and all support services, I think it's vital that we do work together. In terms of the budget, now you mentioned, you tell budgets 1.3 billion. This may be, again, an impossible question, but how much of that do you invest in the county in terms of it goes down to our three provider trusts? And how much goes out of county? And I asked this because at the moment, I'm currently, I need to have a back operation for two prolapsed discs. And obviously, from Grantham, my GP's provider is a hospital in Peterborough. So obviously, the budget following the patient goes out of county. So, and of course, for me, that's always been the big thing about, you know, the money following the patient. The danger is that the money goes out of your own, you know, out of our county. And obviously, in Grantham, a lot of our patients go over to Nottingham and Leicester. So, but on the other side, I guess, there's going to be inflows of money that potentially come in from patients who say may live in Cambridgeshire, who may then go to, you know, perhaps into or north of, who may go in to services in Boston and Stamford, whatever. So just trying to understand those flows, those flows in and out. And, I mean, the hospital I'm going to Peterborough is actually part of the private sector. But it's providing trauma or debilitating surgery. So from my perspective, I don't really care. I know that I'm going to the hospital at some point for the operation. But just a bit about, what could we do to develop these services that we're currently going out of county, in county, to actually keep the money in the budget in county? That would be quite useful. But thanks, John, for a very thorough update on what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, thank you, Mark. Some great, great points there. The continuous sort of reorganisation and restructuring of the NHS. Well, it's a fact, isn't it? For me, especially because Lincolnshire is a very, very big county in terms of geographical footprint, as we know. And we know that, you know, Maplethorpe to Stamford, Gainsborough to Spalding, these are very, very different places with, you know, different priorities and different presentations and different populations. So it's vital, absolutely vital, that whatever the structure is, it pays attention to these local differences. And in my mind, so much is local. All I've tried to do is have a sense, get the balance as right and as sensible as we can between the stuff that we do have to do countywide and the reality that we have to be sensitive and agile and flexible to the needs, very different needs of communities across the county. As far as my mindset goes, I think that great health and care requires great teamwork. And it's all about relationships. It's relationships within general practice. It's relationships between local services and the populations they serve. It's relationships between community services and hospital services. It's relationships between the NHS and social care because it's all connected. You mess around with one bit and it has implications on the other bits. And the way in which we work together is, I think, arguably much more important than the structures we work, we work in. Structures can be a frustration or an enabler. And one of the ways in which we're trying to develop our CCG and as I've tried to develop it over the past couple of years, is to build and have really strong working relationships with everyone who matters. Be that in the NHS, with their ambulance services, with local government, with the third sector, with the university, with the LEAP, with Active Lincolnshire, with NHS England. Because I think if we get that frame of relationships right, that will help us. Keep it as simple as we can, see it as a joint endeavour. And one of the advantages I think we've got in Lincolnshire is Lincolnshire in itself is a well-recognised sort of term and entity, isn't it? By the population. We've got a Lincolnshire County Council, a Lincolnshire CCG. We've got three trusts with the word Lincolnshire in them. I think, you know, we can, we're well placed to make the best of this for the people we serve. So that's my hope. I don't want our attention to be taken up with structures and reorganising. I think that the resources available to me need to be applied to actually getting the job done in serving the people of the county. Bureaucratic reorganisations are, usually in my experience, deliver half the benefit and cost twice as much as they were thought to at the outset. The second point about the budget. Actually, Mark, I don't have the figures to hand, but clearly, we spend a huge amount of money into it's not just with the three trusts, it's on primary care, it's continuing healthcare, it's paying for, you know, prescriptions and all of that in the county. But in terms of patient flow, clearly, a lot of people in Lincolnshire go to Peterborough, to the hospitals, to the north of the county, North Lincolnshire and Gull, Brimsby, Scunthorpe, Gull. And some, of course, flow, what I call around the corner, to King's Lynn as well. And always have done and always will. And that's, and of course Nottingham as well, from the western fringes of the county. And that's separate from people who, Lincolnshire residents who require specialist care and have to go to a specialist centre for that. There is virtually no flow into the county that sort of offsets that. I have a responsibility to the people of Lincolnshire to support their care wherever that's right for them. So you're quite right, a lot of my resource does go out of the county. Because that's where people in Lincolnshire go for their care. So I have to get the balance right between that. And clearly, the more money that we can keep in county for our trusts, for our GP services and so on, is better for them. So things like the proposal to develop an elective centre of excellence at Grantham. Most of that is driven by a better reorganisation of services in Lincolnshire for the people of Lincolnshire. But we do feel that if we get that right, it might start to be a place that people who may normally go out of county may be more attracted to staying in the county and getting their care there. And equally, it may become something that people out of county would be able to come into Lincolnshire for. Perhaps something I could ask my finance director to do is just provide a, maybe just a side or two for the committee, just in terms of our 1.3 billion and, you know, where that goes. To at least give you a headline indication. And I'm happy to do that. That won't be a problem. The other bit, just to add, is that about a quarter of the NHS budget that is spent on the people of Lincolnshire actually isn't spent by me. It is spent by NHS England. Some of that is pharmacy, dentistry and optometry services, which actually they commission and I don't. I would hope in time that that responsibility does come to us in Lincolnshire. Because I think that would enable us to integrate and support, have more integrated services. But also, there's a lot of what's called specialised commissioning services. So this is highly specialist care, none of which is provided in Lincolnshire, sorry, very little of which is provided in Lincolnshire. But it's very high-cost specialist stuff. And there is a debate that I'm in with NHS England about whether some aspects of that should be evolved towards us here in Lincolnshire. It's a whole raft of things, things like prisoner healthcare, for example, is part of that. But I'll get a breakdown for the committee, just on the headline financial flows.
Thank you very much. I'd be much appreciated. Anyone else, Simon?
Thanks, John.
Yes, Chairman. Well, there's councillor Stephen Woodlett and you've also got councillor Rob Kendrick has joined the list.
Okay, Stephen, over to you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you very much. Thank you, John. I can recall in 2011 or 2012, when I joined the council at Boston, meeting with local East CCG members. And I can recall Andy Ricks being there. And I did say to them, why have we got all these CCGs? Why don't we have one for Lincolnshire? And I can recall Andy saying to it, no, it's impossible. It'd be like herding cats. You never get them to do it, to work together, you know? Well, the impossible's happened, hasn't it? I think it's a sensible move forward. One of the things I'd like to be able to see this new organisation this new organisation do is improve communications between patients and other practices, to encourage the practices to talk to regular patients about what's going on. Because I have to go to my practice website to find out what's going on. Now, I'm asthmatic, and I'm at the age when really flu vaccine is very important. I have to chase them up to find out when I can have a flu vaccination. Happens to be at the end of October. Hope I don't die in between then. But these are the type of things, really, the surgery should be talking direct to me. I'm vulnerable. So they should be talking direct to me about when these vaccinations will be coming in. All right, okay, okay, okay. Okay, now I do have to interrupt. I apologise for that. A slight interruption there. That's essentially what it is. I think that we need to have direct, good direct communications between patients, yeah, and between practices and patients, because not every practice is doing that. Some of them are not bothered, and I think that they need to be bothered, because part of the role of the health service is to improve the health of the public. And that means they've got to communicate direct with patients about what's available and what should be doing to deal with other things, and particularly to take the pressure off A and E. So practices have got to kind of rise up to the standard. I apologise for interruption. I was shouting to someone upstairs who's complained about it. So that's life, isn't it?
Thank you. Points well made. I'll take those on board, Stephen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. And Rob, you wanted to come in.
Yeah, very briefly, thank you, Chairman. Like councillor Whittington, I started off in the NHS back in the eighties, and I used to be paid by the South Lincolnshire Health Authority back in 1984. And then we've had all the various permutations. Obviously, I support previous speakers' view that a strategic county-wide view is clearly the best way to go. But my question was, John, do you feel that now we've got this new structure, it gives you in any way more clout to deal with services that are at a regional level or a national level? You did touch on it slightly a moment or two ago. I was just wondering about that.
Thanks, Rob. Good to see you. The answer's yes. I think that one of the things this will enable me and my board to do is to, how can I put it, stand up for Lincolnshire, the NHS in Lincolnshire, and our ambitions in Lincolnshire in a way in which wasn't previously possible with the four CCGs. And I'm determined to do that with my trust colleagues, with county council colleagues as well, and others, because I think that we have not advocated for, the structures and the approach and the whole thing hasn't enabled us to advocate for the needs of Lincolnshire in the way that we are doing now. So as an example, I am having, sometimes it feels like daily, but it's probably, you know, weekly conversations with our Midlands Regional Director in terms of, you know, what he needs from me, but also what I in Lincolnshire need from the regional team. And I feel that, you know, those are really constructive conversations. And I think that they want us to succeed in Lincolnshire in meeting our ambition. So there's a, yes, yes, it's a straight answer, but also it plays into a different mood music nationally and regionally as well, which is great. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. All right, Simon?
Yes, Chairman, well, there are no more speakers. The recommendation is really just to note the establishment of the CCG back in April.
Yeah.
There has been a request for more information in relation to sort of a resume of the financial, sort of a financial statement.
John's offered that, and I'm grateful. I'd like to thank you very much for updating us on something which had our blessing at the time. And I doubt this, as things evolve, we'd probably like a, you know, a progress report sometime in the new year. But I think at the moment, good luck and strength to your arm is what we're all saying. But to note it, I suppose, do we have to do a formal resolution to note it?
I don't believe we need to do a, for a noting item, I don't believe we need to do a roll call. Thank you very much.
That's correct. No roll call.
Unless anyone particularly gets us, I think we would all agree then that we note John and thank John for his updating report. And we'll have another one in the not-too-distant future. So everybody happy with that.
Yes, Chair, thanks.
And thank you very much indeed, John, for your information today and strength to your arm. And I'm sure we shall see you very soon.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, see you again in due course. Yeah, bye now. Bye.
Thank you, John. Can we then, if we may, now move on to agenda item number eight, which is the consultation on the NHS rehabilitation centre at Sandford Hall Estate near Loughborough? And I think this is over to the other Simon, Evan, which is you, Simon, isn't it?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This item is inviting the committee to approve its response to the consultation on the proposed NHS rehabilitation centre at the Sandford Hall Estate near Loughborough on the sort of Leicestershire Nottinghamshire border. Back in February, the committee received a presentation on this. And at the time, the committee agreed that it would respond to the consultation. The key points really are that the proposal will bring about a net gain of near enough 40 rehabilitation beds across the East Midlands. And they also involve the closure of a facility in Nottingham, which is Linden Lodge, based at the City Hospital in Nottingham. So I prepared a draft response, which the committee had an opportunity to look at. This was emailed to the committee. There was a certain clarification, which is in the later version, in relation to the response on question 12 relating to mental health needs. The pre-consultation business case referred to three weekly mental health assessments. And I think in the consultation document, it's clear that that is three times a week. But just for the sake of, for the sake of clarity, in the proposed response, which was circulated on Monday, I've added in the sentence that the committee would like to highlight the importance of mental health assessments at least three times per week, as stated in the consultation document. So that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much for that, Simon. I certainly thought the response was very appropriate, and the extra bit you sent us. Anybody got any comments on that? Or is everybody happy that that be, the response and the little addendum? Is everybody happy that be our formal response? Did you wish to speak? Andrew, did you want to speak? Oh, she just didn't. Can I have someone to move to that? Angela is moving it, and I think-
I'll have to second it.
You're seconding it.
It's councillor Matthews, yeah.
Anybody else? If not, I can probably go over to Katrina and say, let's have a roll call if we agree that be our response.
Yep, that's fine, Chairman. Yes, we do need a roll call. So I'll read your names out. So councillor Bruce, are you for, against, or abstain?
For.
Councillor Bill Bilton?
Four.
Councillor Matthew Fido?
Four.
Councillor Mrs Sandra Harrison?
Four.
Councillor Rob Kendrick?
Four.
Councillor Colin Matthews?
Yes, I'm for, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Robbie Menchell?
Four.
Councillor Angela White?
Four.
Councillor Mark Whittington?
Three.
Councillor Stephen Woodlett?
Four.
Councillor Linda Wharton?
Four.
Councillor Ray Wharton?
Four.
Actually unanimous then, Chairman, for that response document.
And can I ask that the minutes recorder, thanks to Simon, everybody for such a clear response and keeping us advised. And I would like that in the minutes. So thank you very much. I want a little mention of that. Thank you. Okay, can we then now move on? And once again, it's you, Simon. I think it's our work programme, okay, which is slightly amended today because we've added something to it. But I'll leave it to you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. There is a proposal to add an item in relation to GP appointments and how, the extent to which they are being conducted face-to-face as opposed to virtual appointments. Also, Chairman, earlier in the meeting, there were three elements on the chairman's announcements, which we, the committee said we would come back to. And they are the Ashvilla, Woolsthorpe France Surgery and the ministerial correspondence. I don't know whether you wanted to take each of those in turn, or-
I think we've already- Carry on, sorry.
Yes, sorry. Councillor Rob Kendrick asked to speak on Ashvilla, and councillor Mark Whittington wished to speak on Woolsthorpe. I think there were several people who wanted to speak about the ministerial correspondence. And I know councillor Mike Thompson was also requesting to speak as well.
So starting off, did you say Rob?
Yes. Do you want to deal with Ashvilla first?
I think we deal with Ashvilla first. Yes, that's okay. Yeah. So, Rob.
It was only very briefly, Chairman. The slight degree of irony struck me on this. As we all know, anything out of county is very expensive. And LPFT quite rightly said that having an inpatient acute female unit is a good thing to have. I think the irony that struck me was it's taking place in the very premises that they shut down for children's services, for CAMHS, because they couldn't muster enough support to get that going in county. So they will be, I know on rare occasions, sending people out of county. That's all it was, Mr Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on that aspect then?
No further comments on Ashvilla have been requested. Do you want to move to Woolsthorpe, Chairman? Woolsthorpe?
Woolsthorpe and the drifting there, yes. And I think that was Mark. Was it Mark?
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to raise the point, obviously, that the Woolsthorpe surgery is in my division. And I wasn't aware of the proposed changes. And I was going to ask the question about the number of patients involved, but that's already been answered, 650. But I picked up from Simon's comments that the consultation is a paper going to the CCG Primary Care Committee at some point. I was just wondering, because I would guess that that's a private meeting, but I'm just wondering potentially, Simon, would you mind requesting on my behalf to be sent a copy of that report? Just so I'm aware of the outcome of the consultation, really. I mean, obviously, it's closed now, so I can't comment. But obviously, I just want to be just aware of the responses that my residents actually made. If our requests could be made, I appreciate it. Thank you, Simon.
Yes, Chairman. In response, I understood that it is going to be at a public meeting. So I assume these meetings, and I will check with this, you can view them via, or listen in via Teams, but I will check that.
Oh, great, Simon. If you could clarify that, because if it is a public meeting, then obviously I-
Certainly. The papers, we can certainly try and make ourselves aware of that. I suspect consultation, I think, is continuing. So I don't know whether it would be around November or December. I think they meet monthly, but I will check on when they would be expecting to have that paper back.
Simon, and then we can be kept informed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then the next one we come to was our curious correspondent, which said everything's down to us and all the money's going to follow, Simon. Is that right? From Mr Edward Arga, the Minister of State.
Yes.
Of which there was something, not surprisingly, and I, you know, yeah.
Yes, so the minister, the letter was received by the chairman yesterday evening. So it is quite a late commission to the meeting. And, well, I think it's really how the committee would wish to respond to this. I know that councillor Mike Thompson did request, under the announcements, to speak. And I assume it was on this particular item. Can I just check if he's-
Yeah.
He is there.
Thank you, Chairman. It was just whether it is something that should be shared or considered by the Health and Wellbeing Board. Thank you.
I can certainly pass, I mean, I know that the letter has already been passed to the chairman, councillor Mrs Woolley, and I can pass that request on, certainly.
Because even I have to express some concern about it, and wonder whether our concern should also be sent to the relevant MP as well, because it struck me as being somewhat a strange letter. When we're told that national health and national health region things are in control of it, and suddenly to be told it's down to local decision, I found slightly bizarre. But maybe I'm the only one who feels that way.
No, I quite agree, Chairman, because every time we ask the CCG that same question about the future of our services, they always point to NHS England. So it is confused, doesn't he clarify?
Yes.
Quite right.
Absolute, absolutely, absolutely, Mr Chairman. I concur exactly to the raise just made, yeah.
So shall we say that we would definitely like some clarification and make a response? Am I fair in saying that?
I would agree with that, Chairman.
Yeah, absolutely.
And can I ask, do we have to have a roll call whether we agree in that, Katrina?
No, I mean, if you're all in agreement and no one types, there's no dissent, then obviously we can-
No, I think we're merely going to respond for clarification, saying this isn't the experience we've had in the past. And if, which is down to local consultation, is the finance going to follow automatically? Can we make that assumption? Or something to that effect.
Yeah, I'm sure Simon will have, yeah, Simon will make that response.
I'm not going to suggest that Simon writes it, but I think I know he'll get a response.
He will.
Chairman councillor Hendrick has just asked to speak again.
Rob, yeah, okay, off you go.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just wondering if there's any value in copying our letter to our local MPs to make them aware of the sort of to-ing and fro-ing that's going on over this issue.
I actually half suggested that in my introduction. I think that would meet with general approval from members, I'm right. It sounds as I'm right. Yeah, I've got thumbs up and everything. Jolly good.
Good.
And any other points on work programme, Simon? Do you want to raise, or we dealt with them all now?
I think we've covered everything, Chairman. I suppose the general question is if anybody wishes to suggest anything for adding to the work programme for later meetings. But we've got quite a busy schedule for the next couple of months.
Chairman, did we not mention some time ago about looking at the electronic Ask My GP service that was being provided across the county? And I think Simon was going to look into whether we could do that or not.
I think you were mentioning about it, yeah.
Yes, I mean, Ask My GP is one of several triaging systems that operates, but we could perhaps work that into the item that we've added in about GP appointments from face-to-face. perhaps work that into the item that we've added in about GP appointments for face-to-face. Because generally, if you use an online triaging, you tend to get a call back perhaps on the same day, but obviously not everyone is going to be accessing, able to access that. I think, is that what you're asking?
There is some controversy, I think it's a really great service, but there is some controversy over having face-to-face appointments with GPs, that they're using that to get out of that particular way they speak to people or treat people. But yes, anything you can do to, it'd be great.
Okay. Other than that, I think it's for me to thank you all very much for today and for your contributions, and I think we've learnt a great deal, and I think it's been very useful.
Yeah, well said.
And will you all please make sure you keep safe, and we'll see you all on the 13th of October.
Yeah.
So all of you take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone, Chairman, thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Boom bath. And to you all.
Thank you.